Okay. I want to go through our EBA meeting protocol for variance requests. The applicant requesting the variance will present and the reasons for why they are necessary. The board then questions the applicant. Following that, after the board and the applicant are comfortable with information presented, the floor is open to the audience for questions that can be directed to the board, not to the applicant. This will, people on Zoom or in the, in the room here can, can comment. If anybody wishes to, to call in from Zoom, they should let Sarah know on, on there. Otherwise, they should be muted. When the applicant and board are comfortable with all, that all necessary information's been presented, the public hearing is closed. It can be carried over to the next meeting if further information is needed. The zoning board has 62 days to consider and vote on an application. Generally, it's done the same night. We have a long intended night, so we'll see. Great. The first request is 3378 Fallbrook Park. Austin Haddock, Daniel Spoor. Requesting an area variance of eight feet with a height of a detached garage and 16 feet is allowed and 24 feet is proposed. They're proposing a second floor addition on a detached garage in the RLD. And this is confirmed actually back in April. Now, would you like to sit down and introduce yourself and give us your address?
David, oh, good evening. My name is Dan Spoor. I live at the 3378 with my wife. We've been living there since 2016. I'm asking for a height variance on our garage from 2016 to now. Done a great job of accumulating a lot of items. And I have some access into our second floor, but it's not sufficient to be able to store all the things we need. The home, the primary home on 3378 has a low clearance in the basement. So it's very difficult because of the way the stairs are designed to go down there, plus the height. I could easily hit steel beams when I'm down there, so I can't store much in the basement. So I need space to store things. And the request is to raise the garage second level up. It's currently when I purchased the home, the height of the garage is 18 feet 11 inches. I need to go to 24 feet to be able to bring the side walls up and then raise your roof up. And I hired a architect to oversee this and guide me through the process and come up with a design that replicates what the house looks like. With a couple of dormers on the side and windows, so it'll look very consistent, I'll say, to what the primary residence is. I went about the process of talking with our neighbors on both sides. Like two of them, the south, the north of us sent letters in saying that they have no disagreement with the interest of the variance. And I spoke with my neighbor, both neighbors, so the north of us or south of us. And they didn't send letters in that I know, but they both said that they don't have any objection. So I tried to take all the steps that, you know, were needed to do this, but I very much appreciate, you know, you're considering the request to increase above five feet south from where I'm.
You're 18 something now?
18 feet 11. Yeah, I have a couple of copies if you want to quick look at them.
Okay. I think actually you have those, Sarah. Maybe just pull up the elevator.
It's just different, different size scales. Yeah, so I need to go to 24. The dormer is similar to what we have on the main house.
Is there another file that has more what their house should be uploaded back to the phone?
Uh, it should be, yeah. I think if that's said and done, this is just a, I'll say condensed version.
Looks like there's two rings called four planes and one thing called.
So the height of the ceiling out at the edge is what, five feet something?
Right.
And it was up to seven feet always in. Other than electricity, are there any utilities planned for this?
No, no.
We, we ask that generally because many garages are often made larger in order to have a separate place for people and guests to stay.
Yeah, no, that's not the intent. And, and, you know, I had your quick look at, because I know your rules are set up. If it's attached, there's a different set of codes. But I wouldn't be able to clear the lot utilization if I did that. So plus it, it, it just, I don't need that. It's just typically that give me room to put stuff, because I use both stalls on the basement. I can't get it in my basement.
Are you aware of any other variances in your area over there for similar garages?
I'm, for what we're asking, I, I didn't check.
Okay.
I don't know. There, there's quite a few garages on the street that have 25 foot because they're attached.
There's at least one.
They're at 20, yeah, 25 foot. That was my question was.
Yeah, yeah, there's a number of mine.
Over there, yeah.
I'll, I'll say at least a third of the houses have. And I think there's at least one not attached to. It's could be, I apologize, I haven't checked that.
Yeah, we're around that.
Any members of the board have any questions?
Did you tell me the height of the, of the house itself? 45. And I, I got a floodplain survey update and so.
Listen, increase the lot coverage.
There's no change in plan.
Anyone in the audience have any questions or concerns? Anyone at home have any questions? Are you comfortable closing the public hearing? As I said, we, after we close the public hearing, we have 62 days to make the decision. Generally, we'll make it on, tonight hopefully. You're welcome to stay around for other deliberations. We might be going to executive session at the end to discuss things. You're welcome to stay for that discussion. If you wish to leave, you can call Sarah tomorrow and find out how we voted. Okay, that's, okay.
I guess I'll make sure I give you everything.
Yeah, no, it's fine. Thank you. Hey. Let's see, the next one is Greg Moyer, Melissa Driscoll. This is requesting an area variance to place 184 square foot sign on a building with 95 linear feet of building frontage. Area variance is 89.26 feet, where 95 square feet is required and 184 square feet is proposed.
Close follow. They were online last.
Anybody online for the?
Sierra.
Sierra sign? Nobody here. Okay, we'll, we'll skip it then and we'll come back to it at the end. Moving along. The next one is Elsa Reed, Mark's Engineering, requesting a variance for building coverage at 3314 Fallbrook Park. Coverage of 8.6% as the building, proposed building coverage is 33.6 when 25% is required. This is a site plan approval for a tear down and rebuild of a single family dwelling. This is continued from last month.
I'm Lobey Rockcastle with Mark's Engineering. As said, this is a tear down rebuild. And with the rebuild, we'll need a variance for the building coverage. Lot coverage is staying at the maximum 40%, so we won't need a variance for that. As you know, from last meeting, there was a little discrepancy in determination. And we had clarification given by Chris here that said that the original determination was correct. And we were, didn't have to apply for any more variances other than the one that we applied for initially. I guess reasoning for enlargement of the building footprint from the existing structure is to make the garage into a two car garage instead of a single. Now.
Excuse me, Sarah, do we have the site plan? We have to train you here. Should play itself.
Absolutely.
Go ahead.
Um, there was consideration with the design of the garage to minimize the expansion to get the minimum amount of space needed for a two car garage. The garage door opening is 19 feet. If you look at traditional parking spaces, it's usually 10 by 20. So they've reduced it down to kind of the minimum nine by 20 to fit a car in there. Read some of the minutes from last meeting, that was one of the questions. Did we try to minimize the space to minimize the variance? And yes, we, we did. Couple, Elton and Fred have two cars and they want to park them in the garage, not just one car. Another thing I saw in minutes was lot coverage. If it was, it included the driveway, it does include the driveway. There's a table here that gives a breakdown of all coverages that led me to the calculation. Do you have any other questions based on the variances or anything of that nature? I'm happy to answer those.
The footprint of the house is essentially the same as before, except for squaring off.
But a certain part of, yes. It's kind of just making a straight line instead of having it staggered. You can kind of see that in the existing conditions of the initial footprint. But we are not impeding on the existing setback of the current building. And this is also in character with the neighborhood. We've got a variance for the next door neighbor and wall for more significant building coverage. The building coverage for this lot is less than the one for that lot. So it's definitely in character. We're trying to keep a minimum footprint, maximizing the use of the space.
Chris, so the question we came up before of, you know, being a tear down, rebuild, needing a new, that was okay.
So I want to point out, it was a good question. Mike Warner gave a good response during that discussion. I read the section about that and gave you a, a advice. Mike was right, I was wrong. There's a section after that, your town staff, Sarah, Mike, Mike Murphy, called me the next day and said, hey, what about this, this section? Then, you know, continue looking at it and it's, no, yeah, you guys are right. I was wrong. Kind of make that clear and apologize, apologize to the applicant. Mike Warner was right, I was wrong.
And he missed it.
Why, why didn't I say what I'm willing to say? No, I just said it there. I said it at the planning board meeting. So the applicant, my partner there, we got them on the planning board agenda for initial preview on site plan. I think it was received well with this, with these dimensions.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify that.
Yes.
Right.
Just looking, I think last time you had given us a couple of recent variance requests. 3318 has building coverage of 35.5.
Correct, that's annual.
Yeah. 3312 has one of 35.2. 3326 is 33.7. So all of those are larger than what you're requesting.
Correct.
Anything more you'd like to present to the board?
Unless you have any other questions, I think we're good. Let's, right now, someone would like to say something.
Yeah, a couple of things if you don't mind. Let's just want to sort of turn up. Sarah advances to the top of the law school. The money be well spent, so they're not considered through the high school. And I said, how did you get that reading? She said she's a very close student. Chris Hunter, read the law very closely, but it's very close. And that's right interpretations, I want to compliment Sarah particularly. Chris and Mike Warner were also very helpful with Sarah, yeah, captain of class. Couple of things, one is still the lot coverage, okay? Talk about building coverage percentage, but it still reserves again, that lot coverage of 5%. Okay, so we're, we're below the lot coverage strangely enough. It's a compact enough plan where building coverage, yes, you give us that, we keep the grass, okay?
Do you, do you want to come up to that, just to so that people are curious?
And so now.
Just to the people at home.
You got it, thank you. So folks at home, jeopardy round. So, um, let's see, so I want to point out that we get the building coverage consistent with the neighborhood, right? Unusually, then there's 5% left on the lot coverage. So it's a lot of green space. And then lastly, a quick survey of about 40 parcels on Fallbrook. And Hector, I know that you walked and maybe others have seen it as well. It's about 40 parcels. Some have been consolidated over the years to be 100 footers. There's some odd lots of 35, 60 and 40s as well, but by and large, 50 of them, 50 feet lots are the width. Ours is one of those. Out of those 40 lots, 25, most of the majority are 50 foot lots. Of those 50 foot lots, I would estimate that 67% are pre-existing non-conforming usually, so.
Probably higher than that.
You got, yeah, maybe that's just my math. 67%, so the rule is non-conformity down there. But what they've done, the architect leaves that eight foot right of way for, you know, fire and emergency. That's, so that's critical. So I just wanted to stress that again. I want to thank you all for your professionalism. We're all lucky to have you on.
Thank you.
I just had a question regarding drainage. One of the things that the planning board and the ECB both commented on was necessity for probably trying to approve the drainage.
Absolutely. We have proposed dry wells. I was actually talking to Fred earlier and maybe going towards a rain garden. May propose previous pavers for the walkway. Anything that can kind of cater towards more infiltration in that area. More than what there is right now anyways. So we are putting some green infrastructure in place.
So Chris, this was presented to the planning board or just a preliminary?
It was presented to the planning board as we, we received well. They, they were not in a position to make a decision, it's time of their way.
Right.
That was the main consideration they had. Yes, was the runoff. I assumed they would take care of reviewing that.
That's absolutely in their purview and with town staff, town engineering. That's obviously something they'll ensure the sensibles.
Anyone else on the board have, oh, I guess one thing, this is a, needs to be a super majority because Ontario County Planning Board recommended not, not to approve it. So you'd have to be two, yeah, we, so we need four out of five. Board members have anything more?
Nope, my question was answered.
Pardon me?
My question was answered, so I appreciate that.
We'll take questions from the audience, either here or at home. Any comments or concerns?
My message is in the chat.
Okay, okay. Hearing none then. Do you have any objection to our closing the public hearing?
No objection.
Okay, we'll close the public hearing. We have 62 days to make a decision. We hopefully can get to it tonight and welcome to stay around for any discussion.
Think we'll wait here from the sound. Yes, thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you. Welcome Dave back. Actually, I should have, Sarah, Dave was refused for that and Jason was active on that one. Oh, yes. Green, you got it, okay. Okay, next one. Anthony Manizia for Bruce Mink, requesting area variance for lot three, relief from the town code for a lot 2.5 times deeper than it is wide. I'm requesting approval to subdivide apparent parcel into three lots. This has changed from when we originally had it, but you may want to go over the changes you've made.
Yeah, so what's in front of you, it's actually, it's a, it's a subdivision slash lot line revision. So right now, we do have, we have the, the new house that was built in 2020, which is on the majority of the property. And then there's the existing farmhouse. Those are on two separate lots. Part of this is reconfiguring the farmhouse lot to make sure that the septic and everything is within its bounds. That's one of the, the plans for this. The other plan is to take the newly built house that was built in 2020 off of the major lot and create one more lot that would be the remaining of the property. That remainder, that remaining larger lot to have a potential to have a home built on it in the future for the family. That's kind of an overview of the project. The inherent nature of this lot is that length, the width versus, versus, it's just a very, it is a narrow, long lot. Just the parent parcel itself. So anything that would be done would be susceptible to this two and a half times.
Refresh my memory because that was a part of some other parcel at one time. We, we moved that line not too long.
There was a subdivision done, I think in 2020 in order to create that. So in order, and so that might, I don't think we never got that variance.
Uh, there was something, something was.
There were variances for the barn and the farmhouse, but the width versus length was not.
Right. But there was a conversation about development further from there, but I vaguely remember, so, so go ahead.
So the plan would be in the future, there's no plan right now to build any home or do any kind of development whatsoever. It's just securing the ability to put another home that would probably be just north of that, the newer house that was built. Kind of the same location somewhere generally in that area. That would be access from that north. We've kind of shown that you can get a driveway up in there and have access to it.
So you want, you're asking to create another, like a non-conform, it would be a non-conforming lot.
It would be because of the depth versus the width. That would be the only non-conform, everything else.
And we just love non-conforming properties, right?
Well, one, if, if you granted a variance, it would be covered for the conform.
It's not right now, it's mine, right? Or no, explain it.
Right, that's what it's, it's a pre-existing non-conforming, correct? Or no, it already has a variance. Okay, so it's.
It was not, in 2020, when the house was built, the subdivision was done, that variance was not required at that time. I don't know when that law was input in place, but that's not, you know, we're here for this project right today. And this is the variance that we came up with. There were a couple of iterations with this plan that we brought, you know, the, the main house, the, the new house. We brought that down to be three acres, so we didn't need another variance for depth versus width. And we got it to the point where we're only asking for this one variance, so.
I think you also made the other one a little bigger.
Yeah.
We did, yes, we did.
It's over.
It's over, it's just over that acre to be in the view show, right? The scene of view show overlay. So we've done a couple of different changes to, to help reduce our impact on the variances.
Any board members have any questions? Anything else you want to add?
Not at this moment, no.
Okay, open it up to the audience. Any comments or?
Question about where this lot really is on yours.
Uh, could you just show?
What's a question?
Where is this going to be?
Where's what going to be?
This lot you're doing in.
So the lot that we're driving. So right now, right now, you have the farmhouse, that's here, right? This is the farmhouse lot. The rest is one large lot. You're cutting off lot, a three acre lot that is the main home, the new home, I should say. And then there'll be the remainder of what's left, the larger parcel.
So where within the house is being, I mean, there's a remote.
So there is, right now, we're not proposing anything. This is just to secure the ability to possibly do a new home in the future. It would be somewhere possibly in this equation, within the bounds of the setbacks. So, but right now, there is no proposed development, whatsoever.
I'm going to remind everybody that the public hearing has comments, but not questions.
Right.
How is that?
Okay, if you have questions, you can come up to the podium and state your name.
I'm Stephen Sayer. I live at 4779, which is right next to where that driveway is going to be. And I can say that we've had so much runoff in that area that I'm very suspect of anything that's built up there. I lost my driveway three times this past storm. I lost a little bit of it. And there are two septic fields right here and another one over here. So that driveway would go right between two septic fields. And you all know what happens when there's a driveway and runoff from the driveway. So I'm against this. I don't see that it does anything for the neighborhood. I think it just has more potential for runoff. And we all know that we can't control the farmer above us. And that water just comes right down and right down to Westlake Road.
That, yeah, certainly is a recurrent theme of concern that we've had from the neighbors. Unfortunately, right now, our only purview is to look at the lines of the subdivision. We have no say over what is done there. That's all planning board. If, if the, they want to go ahead and put a home in there, the planning board would review it. They would review all the drainage, all, all of those aspects of the property. That's really beyond our, all we can do is just prove or not approve the, the variance.
Okay, but you know what I feel about?
Yes, Mary, come up.
Marion Cassidy, 4735 Westlake Road. I'd like to start out by giving a little history. What seemed to be 100 years ago, I was on the town board. I was also on the code committee. And so some people might ask the question, well, what good is a law that says the lot can't exceed two and a half times the width, the depth of the lot can't exceed two and a half times the depth? It usually occurs when somebody is trying to circumvent the law as in flag lots or as in a problem we had where they wanted to create stringer lots that came down and had a little piece of the lake so that all of these houses up on the lake would have a little piece of lakefront that they could advertise it and sell it as lakefront property. That's usually what happens as a result of exceeding this law. The comp plan, our comp plan says that they do not want to encourage development in the steep slopes. This is most definitely the steep slopes. As I think some of you have seen the videos and pictures that all of my neighbors had sent in of all of the mud and stuff running down the hill as a result of the building he's already done. Lot number three, if you look at it, you look at this plan, this dotted line here is hard to see. This is the existing lot line for lot number one, like this. So can you see what I'm doing there? And I sent in a colored map that shows that very clearly. So it's not just subdividing off this lot. It's doing some major changes in these lot lines significantly on lot number one, bringing the lot line from up here at the borders probably way down to allow for this weird road that isn't for anything into. road that isn't for anything in particular to go in, which we know is going to be developed and cause problems on the lake on the other side. The five questions that you have to answer, I'm sure you're all familiar with, one of them is, is the variance substantial? Mr. Mink has answered on his application that no, it's not substantial. The width at the at the front of the property, which is considered as the width of the property is a hundred and eighty-five point one six feet. That's actually combination of these two pieces, that's this little piece here and this little piece here makes a hundred and eighty-five feet, that's the frontage of this property. Because it's a very weird horseshoe piece of property, the bunker around here, go there. Okay, first of all, that doesn't meet with the code one seventy-four in subdivision law, where the lot lines have to, the side lot lines have to be substantially perpendicular to the road, that doesn't do it. But the lot width is one eighty-five, the depth, and these are figures that I got from Sarah, the depth is sixteen forty-eight point five. And with Sarah's calculations, the depth as a percent of the width is eight hundred and ninety percent. That is three hundred and fifty-six percent more than it should be, that's substantial, you can't call that not substantial. The reason the comp plan has said that they don't want development up the hill is, well, let me, let me go back a bit, all of us have asked for sewers in that area. We're told, we're regularly told, no, we don't want to put sewers in there, which are really necessary for the lake. As you can see, you're going to have running water running over the tops of all these septic systems. They've said, no, we don't want to do that because we do not want to encourage development up the steep slopes, and we have steep slope laws that are in place. If we don't, as a town, want to develop those steep slopes, why would you give variances that encourage that? That's just absurd. There are five other, there are five total questions, will this harm any of the, anyone in the neighborhood? The development that he's already done has harmed the neighborhood, you can see all of the the videos and pictures that people sent in of all the mud coming down the hill. That this little sliver over here that they're slipping by and not mentioning as a major thing is a major thing, because this is steep slopes here. If you look at the steep slope map from the county that I sent in, these are thirty percent slopes. So you're going to have water rushing down here, and Steve Sayer will tell you, it's already a problem with with properties over there. He's lost his driveway several times, so it it is detrimental to the neighborhood. It is a very substantial variance, and it is self-created. We don't want it there, none of these people that are here tonight want it there, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Harold Dobree, four seven eight nine County Road sixteen, Marion covered most of the points. I just want to, you know, reinforce that we have water coming down, you've seen the videos from across the street, and it's gravity. And the steep slope, more gravity, more clearing of area gives less area for the water to naturally drain into the ground and then carry forward across the road. And I don't put a lot of faith in, oh, we're just putting this in here because we don't know what we're going to do in the future. He's advertised the barn as a recreational space, I believe that's a business. It's on his advertisement, you've seen the copies of it, and I'm not sure what exactly, whether it's going to be one residence or eventually a request for multiple residents, and I'd like you to take all of that into consideration, thank you.
Anyone else?
Maureen Stolarno, four seven nine five Westlake Road, my property sits adjacent from the barn, down the slope from the main home. And as the driveways come down from Mr. Mink's property, I am the lowest point on County Road sixteen. In the last seven years since I've developed, redeveloped my property that I've had for thirty-eight years, I've had horrendous water overflow from elevations above my property. We do not have proper storm drains, we have a creek to the south side of his property that is showing evidence of severe astronomical erosion. And that is a concern for the lake itself, the lake's ecosystem and ecology, it is a concern for me. Further erosion of the creek that sits on my property continues to result in loss of waterfront beach, not just mine, but to the south of mine, Mr. Futterman's property also. We can see that in the last four years, bedrock is showing complete bedrock, and the shale is a little out of control as it disintegrates into the creek. Now we're seeing boulders that we have never ever seen before in the creek, boulders the size of Meek. Very, very evident, I did send along some video showing a occurrence last year on July ninth that was unprecedented, I had the person who takes care of my trees, I call him my tree whisper, Tony. And he said, not all of the trees were that ash, we didn't see any new cut trees. But he says, as the property is developed, there's less perp going on for the water, and the trees are disintegrating, are falling off the property into the creek. Last year, the culvert was dammed up as several other culverts were in that small area between Duel and Wells Curtis Road. It took the county two days to clear the logs from the culvert, it took me four weeks to clear the logs from my side of the culvert on my personal property, during that time, we had two other storms that destroyed my beach. So I seem to be remedying my own property from runoff that's coming from a higher elevation above without proper drains on the west side of County Road sixteen, and they they are not proper. The water's just overflowing on County Road sixteen to all of our properties that sit below on the lakeside. I don't know how much longer I can withstand this damage, right now, I'm dealing with a situation every single major storm. We talk about the hundred year storm, well, we just had one. We had three last year, we had one on the third, we had one on the sixth, and then we had a tremendous one on the ninth. On six twenty, we had four inches of one hour, none of the land could perk it. I had an overflow situation that left me with six inches of mud on my lakefront, on my bed, my lakeside yard, and my driveway. Consideration has to be done for any development that's done with a thirty percent slope or higher, or even lower, if we do not have drains.
I think it's not very, that is a problem, problem location there, and it sounds like whether anything's done regarding this or not, there are going to have to be considerations about improving drainage.
Well, similar issues have been taking place all along Westlake Road for any future high developments, especially when there are septic that sit below. My septic system sits right up on County Road sixteen, and it overflowed last year. Partially overflowed on six twenty this year, this is just, just not, not acceptable. I think you have seen the videos that I did send on to you, I'm still dealing with the recovery from that in the thousands of dollars. I just can't even imagine it happened, yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone at home have any comments?
I have a question.
Hi, Doug Webster, forty seven eighty-one, Westlake Road, I'm adjacent to the property that first wants to divide. So my question is, will the property on the lake be tied to which which property? Will if somebody developed the property that he wants to subdivide, they have access to the sliver of property that's on the lake? Because that's directly adjacent to my property.
So I think, I understand all of your concern, and they, I mean, you could all guess at what's going to go here, but right now, the proposal is to do exactly what's there, change a level. There's been no development proposed, and any development that is proposed will be required to be renewed by the planning board, there's also a public hearing, you can ask those questions. But right now, the proposal is just to make two existing lots into three, and the zoning board has before a variance request because the proposed lot number three exceeds two times the width in its depth. I think it's a good question, but right now, there's no proposal to have anything on lot three.
I mean, I think they have a driveway driven, they have a driveway drawn on their map, so it looks like they have, you know?
Yeah.
They have an idea what they want to do, so, you know, I think it's fair to ask, you know?
Definitely is, and you know, I think as they do anything with the property, I think the planning board is going to insist on a number of improvements to the drainage situation. They're going to have to, you know, so you may end up with something better than what you have now, hopefully it will.
Doug, I agree, it's fair to ask, my point was, we don't know the answer to that, and any, any answer we gave would be speculative.
And it doesn't play into your decision at all, is what you're saying?
Well, that's, not knowing might play into the board's decision.
So really, all our concerns are future down the road with zoning, or not planning?
With planning, the planning, for the moment.
Because let me do a, you know, subdivision with no request for what is going to be done for, we can allow or not allow lot line changes. What happens to it after that is all up to the planning board.
So I was going to just respond and say that your grievances that have been stated are compelling. But I would go back to a discussion with Chris, whether an open or a secretive, what are the limits of our jurisdiction with our group? Whether we can, you know, speak to your grievances directly or not, I'm not sure, but I'd like, I'd like to get that answer, you know, tonight, yourself.
The answer is your jurisdiction to speak to those grievances are somewhat limited. You know, this area, I've seen the same pictures, it seems like, when was it, five, six years ago, when Mr. Mink came for the original proposals and you know, this this area is flooded a lot, and somebody mentioned it's from a farmer, oh, that we can't, the town doesn't have the authority to stop and build it.
We can, whatever decision we make, we can, we can't condition it, but we can express our concern, yes.
Absolutely, I think you absolutely can express your concern. It probably isn't necessary because the planning board will automatically, will automatically be concerned about those, these issues. And I'm assuming we'll also hear from the neighbors again. You know, what what the variance, as Marion said, there's five tests that you have to apply, and they have to apply based on what's in front of you. Now, my guess, it's just my guess, and it gets everybody's guess, something going. And what, I guess what you can consider is what could go in. It's in the RLD and RR three zoning districts, there's certain limitations. You know, none of those things are factories, apartment buildings, hotels, or, you know, retail. But you could have one single family home, you could have one single family home with an accessory apartment, a commercial breeding, oh no, that's on Five Morning Papers, keeping breeding, raising those cows with fur-bearing animals.
Well, but Chris.
Those are your limitations.
So I'm kind of confused by this whole lot, this whole lot, that's kind of, kind of confusing, in my, in my personal opinion. There's expand, I mean, there's going to be a non-conforming, if it's, we're making that, we're taking a non-conforming into.
It's currently non-conforming.
But like to double the size of it, I mean, that's still non-conforming, right? I've.
Double the size of it.
I mean, we're, we're making, we're not supposed to have lots allowable two times the depth, I mean, here.
You already have a lot.
Right, so, but what it was, so the whole thing behind, so why are, I guess I'm just confused by the whole parcel, is is what.
Sir, can you, can you bring up the existing like?
Well, it will become more than.
We look at the on, real quick, to show you it's existing, it might help.
Yeah, if you could.
Yeah, because there's a lot line revision in it just to, because there.
I mean, I know what the property looks like.
One thing I want to mention though is during the process of the development, there are two large cutoffs, well, there's one above the house and one above the subject system that do drastically reduce runoff coming down that hill and sending it to that gully. You know, it does, you know, add water to that gully, it all gets there eventually, but this keeps it from getting, you know, down to the road right below the house. So currently, that's what we have, we have the house on a large piece, which currently, the way that it's developed, we have this frontage here, so it is right now, but it is not.
Can you, can you blow it up?
Yes, please.
What's the frontage now?
Yeah, because we separated the other house, or how, we have.
This, this was a subdivision, so we've cut inside this house off.
And that one was, was on.
And that would have also, when doing that subdivision, did create someone to not.
Because it was our, I remember the parcel itself was already a non-conforming.
The parcel is in general is a non-conform, just because of that law that was created with this long parcel, just the way it was developed in the past.
Okay, so I'm, so wait a minute, so I'm, I'm confused here, on this, this map that I'm looking at with the red line, it goes around the other property on the.
Yeah, we're changing it, so ours is lot lines, so we're going to, it's, it's an access, that's what's.
Well, that's kind of where I'm.
That's, it's for the access, because it can't access south because of the.
What about the other will be, would be flag lot sort of horseshoe type thing?
Well, it's not technically a flag lot because it has.
What doesn't have any, right, but I mean, if you, yeah, it's kind of like a, a U, right? I mean, I don't know, it's kind of a mess, are we making a bigger mess as well?
Instead of a precedent.
There is one, I mean, there is setting precedents and there's not, I mean, like I said, it is a non-conforming lot. We are just trying to get to the ability to be able, for the family to have another, you know, building lot. There are other ways to develop this lot that we chose not to go down that road, and this is the way that we can reduce development in the future.
What are the alternatives?
If you want me to, I mean, if you want it, private driveways. Town allows three lots off the private driveway. So this is our way of reducing the impact on that site.
What's, but what's, okay, so private driveways, what's the disadvantage that over?
You would have, you'd have three more lots up there. We create the road for it. Just like you saw Foster Road a couple months ago, we did the, the depth versus width on that one. All those parcels at the back were created, those three extra parcels were created, it's not a.
Well, I also had a conserv, conservation, whatever area, right, wasn't it?
No, it didn't have anything, nothing was conservative.
Okay, I'm thinking, oh wait, maybe I know where I'm, I'm a bug, so.
It's just the nature of this lot in general, anything that you were to do, even if you did some redevelopment down into a small twenty thousand square foot lot at the lake or the, at the road, you're still in that RLD. In that R L D, really tiny lot, you still have that effect on the larger parcel just inherently being so deep. Versus it's.
Is there a separate? Parcel on the lakeside?
There is, and it's currently part of the tax number for the farmhouse, and that's staying the way that it. Yep, as you can see, there's a giant Z hook because of the length of black Z hook.
Oh, it's just a little.
It's just a little. Yeah, you couldn't do much with it. And as part of this, we're not changing that configuration. It's just staying with the farmhouse. That's all staying the same.
Does the new lot two, is it conforming or does it have the same issue?
Lot two is conforming because the acreage is three or under. So if we were, we did have it at six, we brought it down to three to conform with that. But we can't bring the larger lot down to three acres because it's just, so we did. Bring that down. So if it's over that lot, that width versus depth live. Applies to anything over three. So if you're under three acres, you don't, you could have a small log on.
Any other questions?
We gotta wait till we'll we'll get to.
Yeah, something more, Mary?
I wanted to make clear that it's not just a subdivision. Can you bring that down just a little? You've got multiple lot lines you change. This lot line is changed. 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 These lot lines, that lot line, that lot line. So then you have one, two, three. Four. Five, six. Changes in lot lines. At least going in there. We all know that it would have to go to the planning board. What they're trying to do is just stop the project. Because the town doesn't want development. Up in the. In the. Steep slopes. And we don't want development up in the steep slopes. So one of the options is to deny the variance in the car to go further. Save the planning board a whole lot of work.
Yes, again.
Sure, I just like to ask. What is significant because you, one of the questions is is the significant impact. He's asking for a variance that's. Three hundred and fifty percent more than what's allowed. On your other applicants, one was eight percent. One was ten percent. So I guess the question to you is, what is significant? Is twenty percent variance significant? Is a hundred percent variance uh significant? Is three hundred and fifty percent? Or is it a thousand percent?
It pertains to each property.
So take that into consideration. It's a three hundred and fifty percent request. In your determination and thinking processes, that is significant variance to be. Uh, approving or not.
Part of the problem with this one is that what currently exists is already around the three hundred.
But now, but this is what's asking for that three hundred and fifty percent. To me, that seems like it's a significant number.
Hello, this is Ted Brewer at forty seven twenty seven. Lake Road, County Road sixteen. Uh. I should mention that. My mother was the chair of the Z B A about thirty years ago. I know how hard she worked and I thank you all for your effort. I learned a little bit from her efforts regarding. The roles of the Z B A and the planning board. Yeah, to echo somebody else's comment. If the Z B A approves this, you're just dumping a problem on the planning board. And the planning board is not well equipped to say no. The likely outcome would be. Some sort of driveway approval, some sort of building approval. And many trees cleared to get a lake view. At that point, the damage is done, and I think we would all be surprised if the planning board just said, no, you can't develop here. The Z B A isn't in a position to make that decision. You're the first line of defense. Protecting the community against unreasonable requests, and I think you have a responsibility to operate accordingly. And to Harold's comment, three hundred and fifty percent, I don't know by what metric. That's not significant in the context of all the other proposals that you review. Another point I'd like to make. Is the. Economic contests context of this situation. I think. Most people participating in this call know that Mr. Mink has three rental properties. All adjacent to one another, the the white farmhouse, the three red houses on the lake and the barn. That's three commercial properties on top of one another. To allow further development of this parcel is in all probability going to create four or more. At this point, we have. What might be an unprecedented situation on the lake. It's hard to argue that this is a single property owner just trying to generate a little extra cash to cover his property tax bill. On the single property owns on the lake. This is a. A commercial enterprise involving multiple parcels. I think somehow whether that needs to be considered, and I would invite the town to consider. A regulation limiting the number of. Rental properties adjacent to one another. This locale has so many rental properties packed in together. That the whole neighborhood is being affected and. Property values at some point are going to be affected. So, you know, this is a very far reaching situation that you're addressing. And again, you're the first line of defense. I think you can do something about this. I I hope you do, and thanks for listening to this neighbor.
Thank you very much. Anyone else?
Yes, hi, this is Pat Brewer. I just want to echo what Marion was saying as well as Harold. We understand that this is currently a nonconforming property. The question I would have would be, why would you want to exacerbate that? Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yes, I am Bruce Mink. I just want to clarify that the uh four seven eight eight white farmhouse head is a short term rental with the permit. For the last eighteen years, I believe that is in a letter that I sent to you. Uh, four seven eight five is my mother's property. There are three buildings which comprise a single family residence. Uh, three hundred and three bath, that is a rental for seven sixteen years. And the barn is not part of anything except for seven nine zero, which is my primary residence. It is not part of any rental as per the zoning. Uh, department, uh, short term. Permit. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can you hear me?
Wait, no, no, hang on. So. Bruce. Marion submitted something. Um, can you call that up? That says the the barn is available. Can you address that for us, please? I don't know if it's from ten years ago.
That is not part of the rental. The zoning department I discussed with, it is, it is that for, it is the parcel that is locked um. Lot uh, four seven nine zero, County Road sixteen. That is what lot it belongs to. It is my private residence. My primary residence.
Okay.
I don't know how to clearly say that.
So this, I've, well. I've heard that. There's a post of some sort. I just want you to have the opportunity.
That's all, that's all eradicated.
The barn adjacent to the farmhouse.
Yes, I took care of that last year.
Oh, I didn't see the date, July twenty.
It's advertised right now. That you will have allow events. Events are not allowed on rental progress.
That is incorrect. I don't know how else to say that.
Check out development.
Alright, okay.
Okay, um. Address that. So you have a post. That what it was in twenty twenty two or whatever he says was his primary. Residents. Then it's rented. It's advertised for, and now when it's questioned here. It's allegedly. No longer rented, rentable. So it's gone back and forth. What happens tomorrow? Is it rentable? Or is it not? Because you've seen it was told to Chris in the ad, oh, that doesn't exist. It's never been rented. But it's rentable. That's his words, his ad. Posted by Bruce Mink, I can read it to you. It was right there. That he's advertising the farm as a gathering space at an additional cost. So does that apply now or does it have a change yesterday because he's in front of you today?
You can't see it.
Yes. Sorry, my name is Louis Norrie. I live at four six two five West Lake Road. And I have a more general question for you all, because it sounds like I'm hearing a feeling. That there's a necessity or a right to a variance. And as a developer for forty years, I've always. Had to approach each variance by first demonstrating necessity. Not a desire to develop, but necessity. Um, and I don't see any of that here, and it makes crazy lot lines that are going to be. You're going to have other people come and rub this in your notes. And say you did this and you didn't have to, and there was no demonstration of necessity. So if I demonstrate the same things. Uh, I want a variance or I want to bring an article seventy eight action. And I think that you're setting yourselves up on a bad design and a bad development. Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else at home? You feeling comfortable with closing public hearing? Is the applicant uh willing to close the public hearing? After we close public hearing, no further information can be given. Alright, we'll close the public hearing. We have sixty two days to uh. Make a decision. Try to get to it tonight, we'll see. You're welcome to stay around for deliberations. Okay, let's see. Next one is um. Two, three, one, one, Route three thirty two. This is Jim Malka. Or Honda dealer, I believe. A construction of a twenty eight thousand eight hundred square foot parking lot in the form based code zoning district. Applicant is required to obtain. Uh, variance for parking area that is located between a building facade and primary street. Landscaping less than ten percent of the parking lot. Parking lot with.
I'm sorry, folks, I'm having a hard time hearing. Thank you.
Applicant is required to obtain an area variance, parking area that is located between a building facade and a primary street. Again, this is all the new form based code that we're dealing with here. Um, landscaping less than ten percent of a parking lot. Parking lot width exceeding thirty percent of property width. Our parking lot massing and orientation. Parking space specification and internal pedestrian routes.
Yes, also. I am Joshua Sax, civil director of your pastor's associates. Joining me at Jim Mink, facility operations at West Hur. I have, I apologize here, I didn't apply this like cloud permit. Um, brought some copies of kind of some uh. Project details, explanations of the variances, what we're asking for, and if. Want to look at these.
Why don't you make them out?
So that introduction to the project, um. First first page and will be submitted. Um, this is a parking lot expansion, uh, existing Honda dealership to the south. I can see some of the building on the bottom edge of the screen here. So it's in form basically, as you said, um, which comes with a lot of. You know, requirements and a read through document. You know, on what the the form and feel of the the area that, you know, this this segment of three thirty two wants to be. Um, given the existing use. For a lot of these variances. So. Kind of. Uh, more so the existing business, um, some information on the second page. It's derived from by West Hur, some stats, parking demand. Um, you know, for for the lot, you know, as I said, there, you know, there's forty employees. Hundred forty four daily news, raised those twenty three daily sales customers and three eight four orders. Um, so on average, you know, I suggest so today. You know, two hundred fifty three at a, you know. Uh, a level of the existing hot, there's only a hundred ninety two spaces now on the lot. Um, so that's kind of the. The answer this expansion of the parking lot is to account for. This demand that the dealership is seeing um from customers and. How much business that they in the area. That was kind of the. You know, desired to have this parking lot expansion for this lot. Um, I stated in the intro, uh, six variances requested. Um, kind of going through the first one, parking lot. Located between building facade and primary street. Uh, in the form based code, um, you know, emphasizes, you know, for for new builds, for buildings, having buildings along. The the frontage of Route three thirty two with parking in the back. Um, obviously, given the existing site use, uh, lot constraints, given the wetland. Um, and where the building currently is, um, you know, putting parking in the rear behind it. Uh, it's feasible, so that was the. You know, asked for this variance, obviously the significant, given it's, you know, basically going against what the bit of the. Form base code is saying, no parking on the frontage. Uh, but given, you know, the existing use, surrounding uses. It was, uh. Nowhere else, put it in relation to the lot to the great desirable outcome of the. Of this parking lot. Um, the second was landscape, less than ten percent. Um, so currently around at eight. Um, you know, if you're in this area, any other car dealerships, uh. You may have seen, you know, a lot of them are just asphalt. Um, more storage, so we did make an effort to, you know, break some of that up with some brass islands throughout the lot. Making kind of a center brass island in the lot to provide, you know, more typical green space and what you see. On a typical display lot for car dealership. Um, so that that's currently eight percent, so it's two percent uh. Variance that we're asking for. Um, for for the landscaping. Um, the third is the parking with, you're seeing thirty percent of the property with. Uh, this is in the section of the form base code where it's mainly talking about side lots. Um, so in the form basically, if this their building in the front, if you have a side lot, you tend to have that less than thirty five. Um. Kind of similar to the parking in between the building and the frontage. Um, you know, given the existing use and layout. Um, in the. Requested amount of parking spaces that we're we're asking for for. The the business it's creating, um, succeeding that amount, um, about eighty five percent of the lot width. Of the, you know, current lot, so. That is the yes for that, given that. Um, simply fit side variance. Uh, number four, massing orientation. Um, for base code basically doesn't want, you know, huge sprawls of of pavement and they want it broken up. Um, the kind of sections, you know, fifty lot, fifty uh stalls per lot. Um, you know, kind of going back to the third, the. You know, requested amount of parking and what will. Uh, is being requested to to meet the demands of the the current business. Um, trying to break that up somehow. Um, we'll probably extrapolate other variances and issues of, we're trying to break this up, uh, creating a larger lot than. Um we'll probably extrapolate other variances and issues of, we're trying to break this up, uh creating a larger lot than. Um you know, what we would want to uh you know alleviate this variance. Um so that is the explanation for that one, uh parking lot specification number five. Um you know, the double parking along the right side obviously is uh you know, significant variance asked given. Uh they, you know, don't want double parking. Um but given the use of what this is, it's not your typical lot for an office or a business or restaurant. That's a display inventory lot that typically has double parking for um for vehicles. And then the last is the pedestrian access, um presenting any pedestrian access. Uh kind of similar to the fifth variance, the. Um access to these lots of vendor cardio should most of the time you're walking through lots, dealers are walking through lots, you know, people. Walking around looking at cars, it's not a typical um parking lot per se. Um when it comes to. You know, what form-based code would be for a business along the frontage, rear parking. Obviously, you would want pedestrian access, it gets to those businesses. But given the existing use, um it's not very appropriate for for this apartment, so. Um I've seen, you know, we've, you're at Land Board yesterday, they had suggestions and. Um you know, some thoughts on the layout, I'm sure the sport has has thoughts as well to. You know, reduce some of those variances, eliminate some of them. Other other items to, you know, discuss on this, given the form-based code, what what the intent of what form-based code is and what we're asking for, obviously, given the amount of variances. You know, it's it's not insignificant, um especially given what some of the variances we're asking for based on the form-based code, but. We're here to present on, you know, what the businesses that are now, the demand that we have. Uh for additional parking. Um and that's kind of the ask here is to get some of those variances, so.
Hi, good evening. Jim Mulcahy, I'm the director of facilities for Westher. Um so uh for those who might not know, Westher purchased this a couple of years ago from Victory Honda. Uh we've done very well in this location, very fortunate. Um in this community, uh we've increased this business um by over fifty percent from what Victory was doing. Um and it's kind of a double-edged sword, it's great. Um one, serving the community, also for us, we're doing much better. But at the same time, we're limited in our space. We own this parcel uh here currently. Um and it is a direct access to our dealership. So one of the things that we always try to do is limit how many people we send out onto the road. With vehicles, so you know, talk remote parking lots and stuff like that. Every time you do that, you're sending two people out onto the to the road, because you got somebody who's taking the car and then somebody who's bringing him back. So that's just much more traffic that ends up on your streets if we end up doing, having to do something like that. We prefer something internal, directly connected, there is no through traffic on the slot. It's intended use and use will be for new used vehicle display. Is, you know, we are not going to be putting service vehicles up there, we're not going to be putting the loaners, the returners. You know, this is a display lot and that's why we want it upfront and where this is at. Um the parking counts that are in there, I mean, we are, we exceed. Our lot today, and I didn't even include the lease return in the wholesale. Uh vehicle, so if you're unfamiliar with the business, the wholesale vehicles are ones that we won't resell. You know, we take something in on trade and it's just not something we'll. So we have to store that onsite until a certain period of time. There is, behind the Mazda store, which is adjacent to this, we do have some parking there, that's where we generally put those. So we are technically taking them off-site, even though it's an internal road to ourselves. So there are, there is even more parking that could be here, but we've already mitigated that. So I know this is a a large ask of you, I know the the town has adopted, you know, this one base code. Uh and they have a look and feel that they are, you know, or view, I should say, about is for that, that you you would like. Um the reality is, if you look, I mean, from Parkside to Emerson. How many car dealerships, how many other businesses are identical to this, you probably. In that area, maybe have five undeveloped lots. So the chances of that look and feel changing. Um is only going to happen when people start redeveloping their lots. I'm not adding to the building, I've got enough building, I can't, I'm not going to expand just for that. What I really need is the parking space and I'm asking that that be considered. Uh and you know, we are here, you know, fortunate again that our business is doing well. Um and we'd like to continue to to give that same support back to the community. Anything you can do to help us with that, we greatly appreciate.
You know, as you know, the form-based code is new. And I don't think any of us expect that everything's, everything's going to change overnight, but uh one thing I saw from the. Uh environmental board. They calculated if you just drop two parking spaces that you wouldn't need, the ten percent, the two percent. Uh variance for uh landscaping. That seemed to be a relatively small thing to get rid of.
Um I wouldn't say two per se, I mean, if we're at around eight percent now. I mean, those lot, those spaces, nine to eighteen. A whole lot, I I think it would be more than that. Is it, that basically like one spot is essentially one percent of the whole parking lot and. We have ninety-two spaces total now, with all drive aisles and everything, I think it would be more spaces to remove to get that, so.
Not sure where they got that figure.
Their comments say um ECB strongly suggests that the applicant advised their plans to add the additional two percent of the total landscaping needed. And eliminate need for the landscaping of less than ten percent.
Somewhere else in there, though.
I think they're giving an explanation, the next sentence says, the loss of a parking thought was too conservative landscaping may have already been applied.
Wow, maybe.
They're focusing on the percentage difference. You're at, you know, ten, less than ten percent prior to that variance request. And you have eight percent, they're asked, they were suggesting that you bump it up to the.
Well, no, I I math's beyond me, so um I will. Would also like to point out to that exact point, though we're developing less than a third of this parcel there. We're maintaining the wetlands, although it's not interior landscaping. We have a ton of landscaping that's going to be left on this site. Because of the wetlands will not be developed, you know, anytime soon.
I did the quick math and it was, on average, a spot would be about. Point five-ish, yeah.
The architect, the architect didn't even try.
I guess if that's something which could be considered.
So one of the things that we want to take into consideration, especially when we're looking at, as Chip said, this, the form-based code is new. Um you're walking in with a, you know, you're not conforming to the rules and applying them. Um and it's not going to be an overnight switch now, you know, because you're going to test it, you're going to change everything. One of the things we do want to undertake, what considerations have been made to move in the direction of the form-based code. I mean, you're here to ask for a variance to not comply with it. But what are some things, some things about your change that you're proposing that will actually move you closer?
So I would say, you know, for the lot that's there. Given in the future, whatever, if and whenever that may be, that this corner does get developed. That would be, you know, related to the entire dealership. Obviously, that would mean having buildings along um the frontage of the lot. So I would say, you know, the way the parking is oriented now.
So do you have a picture of the whole lot?
The whole set of lots.
Yeah, but it's not, it's.
No, they don't have one.
Yeah, that it's not, that's not bad, so where's, where's your line on here?
For the property line?
Yeah.
So part of this is also a lot line adjustment, the commodities. Um so that's this lot now, is that one, there's this one that has the. Connection to there.
So we do own all those parcels and to, just to go back to your questions, I mean, we did add a lot more landscaping into this plan than we typically would. Any dealership lot, even by putting them the horizontal lines.
Chip, I'm so sorry, but I can't, I cannot hear you.
Um can we please have it quiet back in the audience? Do you want to talk outside?
Sorry.
Yeah, sorry, so to to your, to your questions, we did look at the code and understand, you know. What they were asking for. Um we did add a lot more landscaping than typically we do in many of our other locations. A lot more landscaping than what any of our other competitors in that area have currently. Um so it it, there certainly was a, an attempt, we. Uh I I know one of the variances on the actual parking size, we're making her smaller. Um so we actually don't want to take up as much land because I'd rather keep them condensed. Um so we did look at it, there are, you know, I would say landscaping was probably one of the biggest, and then also a little bit of a configuration. You know, we could have turned the corner and kept going, um we made a bigger area. I would have loved to maximize that, but we also know that we're we're trying, we're trying to meet. It's not necessarily halfway, but we are trying to not just completely turn it into. Uh an asphalt pavement lot, we are helping, we're trying to mitigate that a little bit.
Well, let me ask the question, if you had the same position with it, with another automotive. Uh you have the place, but you start out with much less land. You have the same problem, fifty percent growth, terrific, what do you do? If you don't have the the option of uh.
We we generally will purchase land around it if we, if it's available. Uh we do have uh remote lots in certain situations. Um they're not preferred at all. Um but in that situation, if I don't have another option, yeah, we do that, like east, eastrores probably are um. Worst situation that we have in that type of situation, because it is in a downtown village. Uh I have minimal parking, I'm landlocked everywhere. Uh so we, around the the corner, we do have a a storage lot that we utilize there. Uh but again, that's too crowded, no, it's too crowded, I gotta put out there, I gotta hire more staff. Um and you know, it it just, it adds a lot more problems. Um when, especially when it's, I've got a vacant land right next to me, makes a lot of sense in this situation.
So I think it's important for. Everybody to understand why you're asking for this. We talked a little bit last night, sir, can you put down the driveway parcel? I said, isn't there a spot right behind, right at the, you know, I guess the easternmost edge of that where you can put parking? And you said, but there's a reason you can't, right?
There's what, that's all what.
If that wasn't, that was just flat land. Is that where you, I mean, would we be here? Would you put your parking lot there or do you need it up on the street? Is that, can you explain the reasoning? It sounds like car dealers want it on the street.
We're in a car selling business, so you're going to put your product out front. So uh it's much more convenient to take a customer and walk them along the front row or as they're driving down the street. Say, hey, look at all these cars they have, let me stop in and see, you know, what they have. If I've got them all tucked in the back over there, it kind of doesn't help me. So the the ideals, I mean, you you look that whole street, that's the reason every other car dealership has that.
Is there a way to do it differently, put a strip of cars along the front? And then, I mean, you can see the behind your buildings from Route three thirty-two. If, if I'm saying, if there were a bunch of.
There are other ways, the.
What's the detriment, why can't you?
The smallest, most condensed footprint that I can do is what we did to get the number of cars that we live on. I can break it up and develop more land and spread it out all over the place. Um but I would rather keep my inventory together if I can.
Okay, why? I just, I think this is not going to be your first question for this variance.
Right, right.
This exact same variance.
About twenty more.
We're going to just go ahead and take advantage of your expertise and your background.
Definitely not an expert in it. I do work for them. So if you're, you've come to our, in the Honda dealership and you want to purchase, you know, a Pacific. If I can have ten of them in a row that are the different colors, maybe the different functions and the options. And I can easily walk you from one to the next and say, okay, these are your options, these are the differences. Rather than some showing you a brochure or telling you to go online. From a customer experience, that's going to be a much more benefit, you would enjoy that experience far better. Or if I say, you know, that I'd love to show you those, can you wait? About a half hour, I gotta send two guys to the lot down the road and come back. Most people don't have time to be sitting around the dealership, trust me, I don't like sitting around it. Um and I work for them, uh when I buy cars, you want to come in, you want to, you know, get your business done and get out of there. Um and and trust me, I I respect what you're trying to do with the form-based code. It is this area and the uses that are in there, just it it. It's going to be a challenge on every single one you do, uh and it's, you know, it. For us and the way we operate in business. I mean, it's not like you're running to Target and you're picking up toothpaste and, you know, deodorant and stuff, you run in, get out and go. I mean, you're you're shopping for a vehicle. Um so the better experience I can give our customers, not to mention on the service side. The the more convenience that I can get them in and out. Um it's, it's cut, it's a, it's a service business, so it's the best we can do that. Um in this, this supports it, that's why dealerships across the country do it.
Okay, now another hypothetical there. Sir, can you click on the one to the right of this parcel? Sure. No, adjacent to the dealership. So to the right of the driveway, there's a big vacant.
Next to the Mazda, so.
Yeah.
So.
If I said, you can, yeah, right there, if I said we'll swap you. And you can build your parking lot there. And you can keep your cars of the same model and different colors. Uh next to each other for customer convenience. Is that almost as good or is that a problem?
It's less than ideal, obviously, along uh the strip is going to be more beneficial. Um you know, you you drive through towns, if you see one car dealership that's got a bunch of cars out front. Go to the next one over and he's maybe got five or six out front, which one are you going to be inclined to stop? The guy who has inventory, the guy who's just going to be able to get you here. Um so it, from a perception and sales way, absolutely. Putting it out on the main street is ideal. Not gonna lie to you, we have that situation many other places where we have a a backlog like that as well. It works, it's not as beneficial. I don't own that land. I don't know. I don't know what it would take to get, I will to.
Plus, if we turn it into a parking lot.
Uh we did look at the one on the other side of Mazda.
Chris, I I don't think it's our job to tell the private business. This sounds like maybe we should push EVs, if you know, I mean, get rid of all propane and let's tell everybody what to do. I mean, we've had this form-based code rammed down our throats in the, for the zoning board. And this thing is so out of whack with the, with form-based code, but yet look across the street. And character the neighborhood or all the way down the street and everywhere else and yet. We're trying to tell a private business that's trying, that's doing well. We're throwing impediments in in their face, I I.
And 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 it doesn't make sense for this particular business to have a bunch of trees in their parking lot, for, in my opinion, but that's.
I'm not supposed to editorial.
Not that we're telling you personally. And I was like, just saying, just, you know, we, we, I think we're
But that's, that's why the question, um, so you're looking for ways to deviate how we move closer. So, you know, that's, that's the problem.
Yeah.
That was, okay, go ahead.
I'll, um, I think this would be if this, if it was all blank slat, slate of everything.
It'd be a different conversation.
Be a different conversation, but I also think just where the lot is with the wetlands on there, I think it'd be difficult to develop, you know, what form-based code wants, you know, large, large enough building in the front and significant, significant enough parking with landscaping, pedestrian pathways, it'd be, it'd be difficult on this lot to achieve that. But if in the future, you know, we're, the way this lot's oriented, if in the future at some point, they started to build buildings along three thirty-two in this area, you know, in this corner. You know, the way that the parking slot's aligned, if a building goes there, it is kind of set up for, you know, if that sidewalk needed to be added throughout, and it could be um, kind of in that first aisle of spaces, a building could maybe go there, and then you have that grass island, that could be a sidewalk. Um, and it's kind of a, a setup somewhat that way to, to use it as a parking lot, if a building would go there. Um, but obviously that would involve a lot of, a lot of construction, and there is a decent amount of grade change from the road down into this, it's kind of a, not I wouldn't say a valley, but um, you know, raising, raising up the grade in this area to put a building there, you know, that would be a requirement, um.
And just to clarify, you are actually changing the building, you know, this proposal to?
No.
No, not at all, you're not
It's just, just a, just a parking lot.
And a lot line adjustment.
And a lot line adjustment.
Eradicating
Okay, no, I'm just, I'm looking at
It's an old aerial that he used.
Yeah, sorry.
So the building had been expanded prior to us purchasing it.
Yeah. And kind of also the, the aerial in the, on the second page, the, the parking lot, um, along the front of three thirty-two, it looks like it's shorter than it is. Um, it's kind of, it's a thicker line around it, that's the current parking, so we're not proposing to push the parking lot closer to three thirty-two, we're actually a couple feet, um, behind where the existing parking lot is, so it's
Okay, plus, there's one other question, is it looks like you're creeping closer with the parking lot in, in this line than you are here.
Yeah, I think it's about twenty-ish feet from the property line, and then you have um, a row of trees in, in front of it, before you get to the sidewalk, and then asphalt on, uh, three thirty-two.
The aerial that you had on, on quarter shows, is, yeah, your aerial.
So if you were to kind of wear those parking lots and extend that up, that would be
That makes sense, but, okay, thank you.
The aerial you stopped here.
Yeah.
You know, had already been expanded prior to us. When we purchased it, I think it was, it was already parked there. We're actually not going as close.
Yes, it's slightly behind, um.
Couple feet back.
Yeah, couple feet back.
Exactly, it just
Reason I brought up that two percent, maybe four spaces. Uh, yes, it would be more landscaped than general, but maybe it's sort of a good little start.
If, if, if that's the one that gets me over the hump, I would, I would give up four spaces.
Yeah.
Um, I'd be willing to do that, you know.
Something like that. They soften things.
Right, exactly, so we can get rid of that request.
We get rid of that.
I can modify it to get it to the ten percent, that's
Okay.
What's gonna
All right, any more questions aboard? Are you finished presenting what you wish to present?
At least some, yes.
Okay. Um, asked anybody in the audience, uh, here or at home have any questions or comments? Um, are you comfortable closing the public hearing?
Yes.
Okay, board comfortable?
I'm not sure.
Not sure.
Yes, I, I, I can't think of a specific question. Can we? You said this once, if I'm remembering correctly, we can ask the town personnel board here for their feedback on this.
We were sure of that.
Sarah, can I ask you for your input on future policy? Sure.
What we say is the same conversation I had in the R C when they first came. Form-based code is different, it's a lot different than the traditional, the We know that all of the existing businesses, most all of them, once that form-based code was adopted, they all became pre-existing non-employed development systems. So we expect that when they want to expand, whether it's the building, the puppy, signs, that likely the things they're going to want to do, and must have done a lot of them, were um, they're gonna wanna request variances. I don't have anything against their project in general. As a planner, we're interested in economic development, cause it's good for the town. What I like to see is that there's been effort to meet the code. That's true for any project, regardless of what zoning district it is, when you get any kind of variance request. You know, first, we ask them to really mean this, why? Is there any other way you could do this? That would feel like to request the variance, my advice has always been the same is you know, how much of a variance is, do you feel is absolutely necessary for your project, and is there a way you can reduce that, or come closer to what the code requires? That's just a general answer to the variances. When the town board decided they wanted to adopt the form-based code, I was there from the beginning, I was in all the meetings. The reason was, right now, Route three thirty-two, as you leave the city of Canada, you're driving along, it's not a place you wanna stop and hang around. You just wanna go through, it's not inviting, it doesn't look pretty, it's just a bunch of parking lots full of cars. That's not necessarily against businesses that are there, it's just, that's the way it looks. The discussions that we had in those meetings before form-based code was adopted, while it was being designed, focused on what could the town do to change the way it looks? We do, well, the biggest answer, the easiest answer was change the code. Over time, the idea of form-based code is over time, projects that we proposed, that begin to come into fun, influence with form-based code, that you need to feel as you're there in that part of town, make a stay, instead of just wanna drive through. So, I mean, that's kind of how it all got started. Back to the idea of, you know, these applications that you're getting for variances in the form-based code. I'm not gonna tell you what to do with them, I just try to guide our applicants into getting ready to come and give you their, you know, presentation, and I always prepare them to give you good reasons, justify why you're asking, is, at the end of the day, it's up to you guys. I don't know, by
Well, I think you did, I think that was pretty
I'd just like to see the upper of the meeting.
She likes, I'm just not, she likes to see the upper, cause they make them that it conforms to your variance standards set forth in those
Right, right. One of what you said, ask for a minimum of you know, minimum variance. Okay, John?
I'm good.
Okay, everybody else? You're good with closing the publication?
Yes.
You don't have to get up to do that. Now, do you want to add anything else before we close the public hearing?
Um, I guess I would add just one thing, uh, I've, I'm not a, a member of this community, I, I live in Amherst, New York, it's an hour and a half, but I'm gonna be driving after this. Um, and, but I'm also an architect, I can understand, you know, what the town may be trying to do here. Like, I would ask that you So, these are destination businesses that are typically in the strip, if you look at them. Uh, you got a collision shop, you got, uh, gas stations there, you've got, um, several car dealerships. Uh, you got some strip malls, you got, uh, storage facility. The community, um, so the look and feel isn't gonna change those destination setups. People are still gonna drive in and drive back to wherever we're going. Um, if there is a denser population of housing right around this area, maybe that might be different as well, and where other businesses might be attracted, maybe that's in the plans, maybe that's coming, I have no idea, maybe that's what they're trying to attract. Um, but the current situation is primarily destination businesses that are gonna come in their vehicles, run in there and run out. So, it, it is your town, it is, you know, you, what you wanna do with it. We're just one business within it, but we are trying to, to be a part of that community as well. Thank you.
Great, we'll close the public hearing, everybody okay with it?
Yeah.
We have sixty-two days in which to make a decision. I don't know what went on here, whether it'll be tonight or not, we have sixty-two days, uh, you're welcome to stay around, uh, for discussion if we get there. Thank you. All right. Next one is, uh, another Route three thirty-two, uh, sign and lighting services, Melissa Driscoll, Patrick Angel Bach. This is for Randall Chevrolet, is anybody here to do that one?
Good evening, can you hear me?
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, I was also here for the Sierra, but I was having a little computer issue, but, uh, I am here for that also.
Okay, we, we'll come back to that.
That's fine.
Okay, let me just, let me just read for the, uh, installation of a, uh, wall sign for Garber, Randall Chevrolet in the form-based zoning code, form-based code zoning district. Area variance for a third sign on a building, form-based code zoning district is required, and relief from that is being requested. Okay, uh, please present your, uh, request.
Yes. Uh, good evening, Kirk Wright, Sign and Lighting Services, five thirty, State Route one oh four, Ontario, New York. So we had a, uh, they had an acquisition and a merger. Uh, Farnsworth, um, was acquired, the Farnsworth portion, uh, by Garber, so the new name of the business is Garber Randall. We are looking to remove the existing forty-two point seven five square foot sign. Replace the, uh, Lucabon panels on the building and install a new forty-seven point eight six square foot sign that reads Garber Randall. Signs will be internally illuminated with LED, the same as, uh, what's there now. Basically, no harm, they're changed to the, uh, to the neighborhood. Um, the reason the sign is slightly larger is there's more letters. Any questions?
So we're looking at what we want it to look like.
Pardon me?
This is what it's going to
This is what it would look like.
Okay, thanks, I, I thought so.
Yeah. So just the five square foot increase because of the number of letters?
Correct, there's, uh, I believe, four more letters than there was. Plus, there's a gap between them, so yeah, we're, we're adding an additional five square feet.
But technically, the zone, the variance is to allow three, where you have the, the Chevy, the Chevy sign, the service sign, and now this is a third.
Yeah, we, so these, these were approved by us years ago when Randy came in um, to get the new signs, cause Chevrolet and GMC came up with new regulations for all their dealerships, and so he came in, we made some alterations, and so, yeah, that's, we, we approved those.
Okay.
Those were cool.
I'm, I'm just trying to count the three.
Yeah, that's right.
Any other questions? Um, anything else you'd like to add to this, I know you got two more to go, one very similar to this. Um, but let's, you okay with our closing the public hearing on, uh, this sign?
Absolutely.
Okay, again, we have sixty-two days to make a decision, we'll hopefully try to get to it tonight. Um, okay, uh, I didn't ask anybody in the
Yeah, whether any
Anybody in the off, audience or home, okay. Um, the next one is, um, five, three, seven, five, Thomas Road, installation of a wall sign for Garber, Randall Buick. GMC in the form-based code zoning district, area variance for a third sign on a building in form-based code zoning dis, is required, relief from that is being requested.
Can I ask what the specific code under form base says, why, why do they need the variance? Is it the size, or is it the number, or?
Number.
Number.
Third sign, building, pull up the, town that pull up the zone, mother combination of capacity. So, sign needs the size of your variance layout in form-based code, but not the number, they're asking you to go in and you're allowed so your, your requested variance from you guys is to allow them to copy one, the number of signs, not the size, the sizes you take.
Which is already on the building, though, right, I mean.
Yeah, so
So what would the code be, if we were looking at something down in near, uh, at five and twenty? That was not form-based code, what would they, what would the requirement for the signage be there? I'd just like to know, I'm trying to differentiate here on form-based code. What's that?
Said I don't want to memorize that.
No, no, I'm not, if it's, if it's gonna take a lot of time, I don't wanna, I don't wanna take your time, but I just, just curious as to how far off we are. How this form-based code is coming to be.
How far off?
Well, we're off of this number of signs, right, is that what you're saying?
Much different than form-based, they're pretty different.
Right, I think it's
Installation of a wall sign for, I'm sorry. Installation of a wall sign for Garber Randall, GMC, and form-based code zoning district, area variance for a third sign on a building, and form-based code district required it to be made, and that is needed.
I think what Dave's asking is if we weren't in the form-based code district, like maybe the Sierra sign.
Well, I'm trying, I'm trying to come up with an idea of what is substantial.
And I'm saying that it's in the town code, and you'd likely look it up, I do, but I do not have it memorized, so I don't have it and so I stop and look it up, which I'm happy to do, it's generally likely to do that, right?
Hey, sir, um, I, I just have a question, the, so, cause didn't we have to approve, is this, it's already the sign that's on the building, right, I just want
I think the reason is
Because it's changed.
Just to be consistent, this has been happening for like a year, I think he had been the same thing. It's bringing, it's changing, it was okay before, now we have the form-based code sign of passport.
Right, well, but I remember approved, they, they weren't okay before, I mean, some of these things we approved, which is why I'm Right.
Yeah, signs in the C C, which is, is used for
Right. I remember us voting on this.
This was initiated because of the name change, that's what kind of
Right, exactly.
Because if it was still Farnsworth, we would
Right, and which I get, but I'm just wondering, so like, but the sign is already still on the building, right, not, or no, we're, we're voting on the, the name change, sorry, I got it, I got it. I was trying to understand which sign we were talking about, cause there's three of them.
The name change, yeah.
The na, it's just the name change, though.
Yeah, could you put that up, uh, Sarah, the
Or it's because of the, there's more letters, right, we're just still doing, dealing with the same one, okay. That was where I was confused.
Just changing the, down on the left there, it said Farnsworth.
Yeah. Okay.
Uh, Mr. Wright, is there, uh, much change in the square footage of the new sign compared to the old?
Uh, actually, in this case, our new sign is, uh, less square footage. Uh, it's, uh, the existing is thirty-one point seven three and the proposed sign is twenty-five point four oh. So there's our five foot from the next door.
Okay.
Just to test my understanding, um, if this sign required a variance, doesn't that variance stay with the property?
Unless it's changed. Unless it's changed.
The code changed, that's why.
The code changed, that's why you're.
That's why, yeah.
That's why you're asking for a new variance.
That's your rights and what you're, your assumption.
So, right.
Hey, anything more you have?
Uh, no, this is the same as the uh, the property next door, just a name change, we will replace the panels. And uh, put in the new sign.
That's right.
Could you give a.
Anybody in the audience or? At home have any question?
Oh, go ahead.
I have one question, and this kind of helps your question, Dave. In a form-based code, if someone is going to make a change to the sign. Placement of new signs for modification or replacement of existing signs shall be redeemed by the zoning officer to determine compliance with the requirements of the form-based code. Replaced sign, it has to be by the form-based code. That's, so even though it's replacing the sign that's already there, the number of signs is changing. Three is not allowed. You're changing the sign, so you have to, you're coming to find this. Sorry, I don't have this code memorized.
No, we don't expect to do.
I'm not blaming.
No, we're just asking, because we're just trying to understand it too.
I'm just trying to get a reference point, that's all.
So Sarah, when, when we have a name change in the future, they'll most likely go to variance, right?
But not because of the name change.
Sign change.
Would be.
Well, that's what I mean, with, that, when I said name change, I meant sign change.
There's one sign on the building, the number of places didn't change, it didn't move, and we still have one sign on the building, that's allowed, it may not come in. It depends on whatever they're proposing with, means the other.
Zero hard ownerships are in the form of the.
Right.
Right.
So we're essentially just.
So every time a car, although I've been called a car, it was.
Okay.
Until next year.
Anything more, can we? Are you comfortable with closing the public hearing?
Yes, I am, thank you.
Okay, uh, again, we have sixty two days, so. We'll see if we get to it tonight, um. Let's see.
You going to go back today?
Yeah, we can go back, I was.
Sierra.
Sierra.
Yeah. Go back, we'll go back to Sierra now, Mr. Wright.
Thank you.
Can I read that?
Hold on, yeah, okay, requesting area variance to place a hundred and eighty, I've read it before. Hundred eighty four, uh, four square foot sign on a building with ninety five linear feet of frontage. Area variance of eighty nine point two six square feet, where ninety five square feet is required. And hundred eighty four point two six is requested.
Good evening, Kirk Wright, Sign and Lighting Services, five thirty, State Route one oh four. Uh, the board had. Seen this uh, at the last meeting, I believe.
Yes.
Um. The setback uh, from the road is substantial. And uh, there is no freestanding pylon sign with multiple tenants. So we are, we're, we're looking to make this sign fit the fascia better. Uh, it is, uh, it's too small for the fascia. And uh, we were asked to uh, to, to get some comps. And I believe, I hope those were submitted to you, I do have pictures.
Yes, they were.
Okay. So uh, actually, uh, most everything in the plaza is um, fits. It is a, a, a better fit in the uh, in the space. Um, and across the street even with the. With the Goodwill sign and the Harbor Freight, it's just, it's just, uh, it's just a better fit and aesthetically, it it just looks more correct.
The Harbor Freight, those are different buildings, they're not, they don't have the same.
Across the street, exactly.
But it's a little, the depth isn't the same, anyway, so the sign looks large to me, I've seen it.
Uh, I was gonna ask, the, the, the sign on the building right now, is it a conforming sign or a non-conforming sign?
The sign that's on the building right now is the one they came to get before, I've shown it on the left, that's the first one, the application, but. Then you get a variance, it didn't need it.
Okay, okay.
The existing sign is.
Man, it looks big.
Two seven square feet, this one was proposed to be ninety five. I'm sorry, a hundred.
A hundred, yeah, like that. Yeah, like that, that's it.
This was the original application. And. It, it went, it started in the variance process and the store was opening. So they actually. Um, fabricated a, a compliance sign so that they had a, a sign on their building. To uh, to open with. Um, that was quite a while ago in this um. It, it's coming, just coming back now that um, again, it, it just aesthetically, it does not look correct, it's too small.
Questions, anybody? I, I guess I would ask, is the current sign an issue as far as readability, do you think?
Absolutely, with the setback, um. From five and twenty. They wanna, they wanna get as much volume, drive-by traffic uh. Is uh, a huge part of advertising and signage is the uh, most cost-effective way to advertise a store. Such as Sierra, um, they're not, uh, the store's not doing as well as it should.
Any questions? Anyone in the audience have any questions? Home? Um, are you comfortable with your presentation when you close the public hearing?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, close the public hearing, we have sixty two days in which to make a decision, we'll try to get to it tonight, we'll see. Um, you're welcome to stay on and bring any deliberations on all three of them, actually.
Thank you.
We have one more. Uh, variance request alone, it's a request from Scott Harder, County Road sixteen. Applicant is requesting a second one-year extension on a stream setback variance set to expire on July eighteenth. Uh, two thousand twenty four.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Um, that is correct, the way you read it, we uh. The owners did not take action on constructing the project since I was last here, a year ago. Um, they received the, a renewal on their, well, they had site plan sign off shortly after renewal of the uh. Zoning variance, but they have not taken action, they've contemplated getting a. A building permit and starting the project, but they're focusing in on fifty two seventy one Metis, which adjoins this property. And they want to finish that project before they start this. So we're back for a second request uh, to extend the variance another year. Uh, because you have a sunset clause in your regs that says that we're needing to do that.
So you, you imposed, when you granted a. Area variance two years ago, you impose a one-year term limit.
Right.
And it has a condition, since you impose that. You can extend it. Uh, there's no specific code provision or near sick law that says. Zoning boards can grant an extension of one of their conditions, because you impose that, you have the authority, the, the right. To either grant an extension or say no, but in my opinion, your standard, your test is. Has anything changed that? Um, that would make this variance inappropriate, you granted that. So that it didn't last forever without them doing something about. So that two years, five years, ten years down the road, we've had variances come twenty years down the road. Hey, we have variance to build this, well, maybe something changed that makes it inappropriate, so. If nothing's changed. And you can comfortably say, by voice vote. Condition extended for one year, wrote a decision sheet that says. Your condition extended for.
Is the intention to actually do something this year, or we're not sure?
I'm not sure this year, I, I think if, once they finish.
I don't mean calendar year, I mean if, within this year.
I believe so. But I've said, I've been saying that for the last couple of years.
Can I ask what the vote was on the variance?
I mean.
I mean, was it unanimous? Um, I think I have an answer.
Uh, my guess is, oh, I don't want to answer that, I don't know.
I don't want to prove it if I voted against it.
Um, no, no, no.
Yeah, right.
I haven't answered that question, believe it or not. Um, because Dussey sent me the whole rec- record from a year ago.
Right.
And so I'm looking at. Meeting was continued to August fifteenth, two thousand twenty three. And. Uh, David and Ray, you voted in favor.
Is it on the, wait, question, is that on the variance or on the extension?
That's the extension.
That's the extension, yeah, right.
Last year's extension.
Last year's extension, I think, Dave, you were asking what, the, what was on the original variance?
I don't think I have.
You're asking. Doesn't matter, it was approved, so just.
I'm catching up, bro.
Yeah.
I would, I, I would just say that if we make, if that's standard condition. We always say that, then if we're gonna back off on that, then we shouldn't have it as a standard condition.
Well, we've, we've given, we've given an exception for circumstances in the past. So, uh, there was one or one, maybe two, I think.
Well, so I want to be clear. You're not requiring them. To do it within one year. As a test of their virtue or their ability to perform, it's, it's to make, to ensure that. The variance doesn't last forever without them doing what they're proposing in the. You know, in the near.
It's perpetual.
Uh, we started doing it when. What's, uh.
Yeah.
Ashley Champion, Nixon B-Body. Got on the phone and said, Chris, they, they told me I might, uh, I don't like variance, but I do, and I said, no, no, we, those are, those only last for one year. And she said, yeah, but this one's twenty years old. At that point, the zoning, the zoning board wasn't conditioning. And, you know, this was a long time ago, but.
Right.
Yeah, they had an existing variance to build something that was problematic when they did. Um, you know, the reason you oppose that is to give a sort of a one-year check.
Right, and they've already, they've already had their one year, so I guess I'm just saying that if we're going to stick with the rule. Then either, either we, we stick with our rule and then, and allow a one-year time, or we don't have the rule. Because I don't, I mean, obviously, the twenty years is, but then, and in between twenty and, and one or two, what are we gonna do? We're gonna, you know, uh.
Is this?
Yeah, it's still.
Is this the second time they've requested, or?
It's a study for giving time.
So it'll be like a third.
I was here a year ago.
Yeah, to do the same thing, okay, so there we go, I just wanted to point that out, so this is the third, this would be a third approval, technically.
Yeah, but there's.
I just wanted to verify.
I also want to make clear, so there's a requirement in. New York State town law that site plan approval, you only get two extensions. Right, two extensions, yes. Um, and the landlord's not authorized to do that again for a third time, there's no such requirement for a zone. Um, it's up to you, you don't have to.
So what was the variance?
Maybe the conditions it meant at the point have changed in three years, maybe it's something we should review.
Yeah, if, if.
I don't know if conditions have changed, but they certainly could have been viewed, the weather we've had in the last three years.
Precisely, if conditions have changed, don't, don't extend the condition.
And how do we know that?
Right.
Let's, let's live in Canada, though. No, I'm curious.
See, now, how do you know that with the one variance?
If I can ask the question differently?
Sure.
I think what we're saying is, it would have been nice to understand what the original variance was that was granted.
Sure.
So that we would know if there was anything about that that may have changed in the town or our code.
That's a good question, it is a variance for the setback from the creek.
Right.
And we got into that and in a very extensive discussion with this board. I think John Casey was on the board at the time.
He was.
And, uh, this property is unique in that, um, it's, it showed this behavior recently, and it showed this behavior a year ago, I think it was July first, twenty twenty three. The creek jumped its banks, it traveled across this property. And on to the fifty two seventy one parcel and out to the lake, and that, that's happened before on certain occasions, it happened again this year, two thousand twenty four. And as part of the design, what came up was it was approved, they confirmed over the variance. We actually are regrading the parcel to accommodate that overflow, but directed away from the homes and on to the vacant parcel to the north of us. Um, have things changed? No, the creek still jumps its banks, it still does that. Um, but the design we came up with has not changed, and I don't believe that anyone will approve that design with the conditions that we worked with, or the constraints that we worked with. Um, I don't think anybody would disagree that what we're proposing for this lot is a net improvement, that's the reason we got the approval.
Scott, if, um. In your opinion, you're licensed professional engineer. Yes, in your opinion, have conditions changed in any? Significant way?
No, we still have the same uh, constraints, same site constraints, so we had at the very beginning, and I actually got in the one, the. Riser project down at the end of Mantitha, which I think you're talking about. Um, when that first came through, when there was, uh, there was a flooding problem down there as well. And I think that was kind of a, an example of how we treated this property too. In terms of putting disclaimers on the plans for the potential of the site to flood, and then we also. As you may recall, we restricted the central area of the property from any development, in other words, the driveway can be located in one section, but the house has to be located in another area. And elevated to sort of act as a, a, a routing mechanism, so that the water, when it does overflow, it overflows onto the driveways. And out to the lake that way versus.
That was the risk one, wasn't it, or the, well, was that the one that went across the, the front yard over to the other connecting property?
Yeah.
That's all in that.
Yeah, i- it's a net benefit to the neighborhood when this, when this is constructed. And once again, the, the owners put a, effectively a covenant, I guess, on, on the, on the property to prohibit. Any construction within the central part of the, of the parcel.
Yeah.
I mean, you, your options are deny the. Request for extensions.
I just wanted to know what it was.
You're entitled to do that. Um, at which point Scott will file an identical variance. Request, application for variance, and the applicant will incur costs and expenses and board law. Duplicate something that's already done, rather than just. Backchat. To make sure conditions haven't changed. Option two, grant a condition for another year. Um, and, you know. Based on the fact that conditions haven't changed, option three. I had an option three a second ago.
Do nothing.
Option three would be. Request some information if you think it's necessary to ensure conditions haven't changed. Um, I don't think it, I think Scott would like to not come back, but I think they're not in a hurry. You know, they're not. So those, I think those are your way of.
I'm not extending it for two years.
No.
Yeah.
I mean, that's an, that's an option.
That's absolutely an option, if you don't think that. Um, conditions are gonna change. You know. You guys imposed a one-year condition at my request. And as a matter of routine. You've, you've declined to do so on a couple facts, in a couple fact-specific circumstances, but. Um, you know, it's, it's not. Something out of the ordinary that's done for two years, I recommend not. Um, but. Because you want that ability to double check.
This can be just done from a voice vote on a motion. Is there anyone who would make a motion?
I'll make the motion. I'll make a motion that we grant the request for an extension for one year.
Discussion. All in favor?
You said one year, so.
I said one year.
When on this case, so.
Maybe fall or, oh, yes. Against it? Okay, passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. See you in a year.
Okay.
No, I'm I'm I'm, my vote on this. You made the, took the position that we could, we could accept Scott's. Testimony that this is a, you know, as a certified engineer, if this is a good move. I'm I'm just trying to do. I'm on this board to try to protect the town. In 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 your legal counseling, you've auth- authorized that, but but I think that. I don't know, that kind of smacks.
I did not. First of all, I didn't. I just asked him the question. And that provided you with some information. Having said. No, no conditions have changed. And it turns out that the elevation of this property. You know, this property has sunk three inches in the last year. Maybe that's a changed condition. If it turns out that stream. Burst its banks and that eroded the banks, so the stream is now twenty-five feet wide. Well, that's a lie that would cost us uh, engineering. So. If, I mean, if if conditions had changed. Scott would be in a fair amount of trouble if he answered my question. He said they haven't. You could, I mean, it's still, you can accept or. You can accept or not accept anybody's work, but Scott does have the license. And an expertise in site planning and and design and. And understanding of this particular project that we worked on for seventeen or eighteen years. Um, and the same project at at Rice's uh, down the way. Um, no, I wasn't saying you have to accept. I was saying, look, this gives you a little information. Take it, you know.
I re- I respect both opinions, yours and his, and that's all.
No, it's Dave, that's a good question. But that's why I did it was. Um, cause I think. It made sense to. To move this along one way or the other.
Okay, um. So the reads are here, so.
Yes, they want to stay here another three hours.
I'm just gonna order these things in a way which I think is reasonable. We do. The reads are here, so. Um, thirty-three fourteen Paulbrook Park. That's the uh, building coverage, thirty-three point six percent when twenty-five percent required. And eight point six percent. Uh, variance. Discussion, comments, concerns?
This, the whole holding this over until this was my raising the question of how to understand the vote. So. If it's been, if that has been looked at extensively and everybody is telling us that. This is the right way to go, then I'm I'm very comfortable.
Resolved conclusively.
Resolved conclusively on hikes. Thank you. Sorry, I. Asked the question.
No, it was a per- a perfectly appropriate question. Why I was adamant that I was wrong was to make sure everyone understood that that's all they have. They did a mistake. I'm not changing my mind and. Uh, you know, no pressure has been exerted, no. Uh, facts have changed, but it's like, you know, couldn't raise the next pair of them, so.
Okay, Dave, Dave, you're recused from this. Facing your active fear.
No, we asked all the questions.
Yeah, I guess, yeah. It has to be a super majority. Uh, the ECB recommended that you not approve it because of. Concerns about uh, runoffs and things with the planning board. Uh, just asked us to consider a runoff, which would really be their. The only way to look at. Anyone like to make a motion?
Uh, shall the variance of eight point six percent for building coverage be granted? Shannon Chevier?
Yes.
Bob Hilliard?
Yes.
Kelly LaVoy?
Yes.
Chip Saylor?
Yes.
Jason.
Yes.
Okay, um. So the benefit to the applicant outweighs the detriment to the neighborhood. I think this is certainly in keeping with the character of the neighborhood.
There was a. Similar variance granted adjacent to the property next door from the same engineer. With greater building coverage and greater loss of.
Several, several in the immediate area of greater.
Yeah, the sheet was helpful.
Um, let's see.
Won't have an adverse impact on the environment. Um, similar conditions to what's existing.
I think the neighbors were in support too, right?
And any drainage, stormwater issues can be resolved. For site plan review.
I think probably could say drainage issues actually can be improved upon. Compared to what's there now. Anything else? Okay.
Most minimal variance necessary. It's only. One percent. Eight point six percent increase.
Okay.
And it has some condition.
As presented, uh, and also uh, that will be done here. Okay, um. Next one, let's see. Why don't we do this? I'd like to do the quick things first, I think. I think, why don't we go to the three sign ones? Let's start with Sierra.
I think it's funny being up.
I think it's funny being up.
I mean, it looks huge when I say.
It's a big ask. I think it's double.
It is a big. It it's like, yeah, it is literally double. So I don't know. I have an issue with it.
You do, you have an issue with it? I wanted to make sure I heard.
I have an issue duh going double the allowable size when it's.
Anybody else that comes here is gonna look at that and say, well, what the heck, you, you know, this is. It it's a lot.
It is a lot. Well, comfortable with the vote, yeah, yeah.
Well, that, well, that's before you take a vote, let's uh, go through your reasons and discussions. And then you'll have them all done and they'll justify and or support the decision to vote.
Whether the benefit can be achieved by other means, uh, just be left the same. Undesirable change in the neighborhood.
That that building, though, I mean, like, it's it looks almost just as big as TJ Maxx. I mean, TJ Maxx has less letters. But they're, you know, I mean, they're.
Let's define the neighborhood, define its character.
So I mean, it does, it looks like it's. Strip mall.
That one strip mall?
Some of the comparables weren't in the term.
Well, they weren't, yeah, on the same. But the building for Sierra is much further off the road than those buildings he compared.
Sarah, do you have the other comparables there on that you could show us?
What is the character of the neighborhood? I guess you define it by the size of the. Signs in the neighborhood you just defined. What are those? These are the comparables?
Yeah, pretty much.
Any of this thing?
TJ Maxx. Well, yeah, TJ Maxx is.
It's as big as existing, not as big as the proposed.
As big as, right, as is, I'm talking about as existing, not not proposed.
They all are about the same size.
TJ Maxx might be slightly bigger, but there's less letters. Yeah, I would say.
No, I'm fabric TJ Maxx.
They're all the signs in that plaza that you just find the same.
Those, those were. Yeah, those two are not. Those Harbor Freights and Michaels are not.
But so like that one, or big lots, any of these. It'd be writing Sierra across the entire. Arched portion.
It's not this plaza. Right, yes. Technically, it's in the city.
Will granting the variance cause an impact to any adjacent parcels? Or any nearby parts?
We denied signs at TJ Maxx extra signage. So just letting you know, that was about a year ago or so. Maybe two years.
Is this, uh, what is the percent increase from what's allowed?
A hundred percent. It's doubling it.
Like double in big letters. Uh, will cause any impacts, adverse impacts, drainage or stormwater? No, traffic? Uh, no. Dust, noise, light or odor, pieces of light, not odor. Uh, views and aesthetic resources? Look out of place, it is. Incongruent.
The two, as you said, your request is substantial.
Double, yeah, I think that's essentially. Emergency service access, natural features. Unrelated sort of historic and archaeological features, so health and safety, no. And then is it a self-created arch? Yeah, what do you think? Uh, is this a mini- minimum variance necessary?
I don't think that's a minimum.
You could argue, is there any variance necessary?
Yeah, and then does the benefit outweigh the detriment? No, it doesn't seem like it does. Based on your previous. Have you covered council?
Yeah, I like, I know, right?
I worked hard on that with these selections for you guys to make it easier for you. Actually, I, you know. I haven't said this in quite some time. When you're making findings of that. Yes or no are not good answers. It's really facts that you're supposed to be supplying. Like the one that our answer to is, is it substantial? It's right. One hundred percent increase over what is allowed. That's double. Those are facts. Yes and no. Oh, the only way you can answer those questions, there are yes and no questions. Um, but what, why I created this and why Sarah thought it was a good idea, Brent thought it was a good idea. Um, and so did your zoning officer, was to help get some facts down. To support your decisions, whether they be granting or denying. Um, in that way, when the next guy comes in for a sign. You're you're answering the same exact questions and you'll have. Reasons why you do the same thing or a different thing. And then you're not liable to get it. Okay, sorry.
Shall the area variance of eighty-nine point two-six square feet be granted? Shannon Chevier?
No.
Bob Hilliard?
No.
David Emery?
No.
Kelly LaVoy?
No.
Chip Saylor?
No.
For all the reasons we just. Other reasons? And, sorry, I didn't, I just, I. You guys, I know you have these reasons. But which makes it easy to just answer the yes or no.
Well, this is good, but this is a more useful tool once we get used to it.
That's why I made you do it, is to help you get.
Okay, so the. All right, next one, sign one.
Item six?
Yes, uh, number six. Randall Chevrolet's, Garber Randall Chevrolet sign.
Wait, that's six and seven, right?
Well, six, you wanna do them together?
Oh, they're two different.
We gotta do them separately.
Okay.
Question, there are questions?
From a common sense standpoint, there's, there isn't any comment, but from a four-based code thing, if we're gonna. You know, I I don't know where we are with this stupid, I mean, this wonderful code.
Well, I think.
Anybody else?
Basically, you're taking one sign down, putting another one up. Very similar size.
But it's a substantial variance if you're looking at it from the, from the basis of a four-based code. Correct? And it's pre-existing.
And I think it's a character of the neighborhood.
I'm going with.
I think we can. That was good. And that's why I was sort of saying that this could happen again if there's another change. But to me, this is not, uh, it's not, it's not pushing back on the code. It's just bringing people up to, up to speed.
Burden on them.
Because if somebody came back for a third sign that was three times as big.
Okay, uh, call.
Okay, sure. Uh, shall the variance for a third building sign be granted to Shannon Chevier?
Yes.
Bob Hilliard?
Yes.
David Emery?
Yes.
Kelly LaVoy?
Yes.
Chip Saylor?
Yes.
Okay, benefit to the applicant outweighs the detriment of the neighborhood for the reason you have, the reasons we were.
And it literally is just the name change.
Do you have a reason for or discussion or?
No, I quit, it wasn't, it wasn't a self-created hardship because uh, the.
It's ba- it's just substituting one.
Substituting inside.
So that's substantial because of it. It's the same sign with a different name on it. Therefore, it's not substantial. That's good. We'll have any, uh, we're gonna define the neighborhood first. And the neighborhood is the car dealership that I assume. And the character of the neighborhood is typical car dealerships with. Multiple signs. Parking lots in front. Dealership and, uh, service buildings.
Well, we're only talking about the sign on this one, right?
Well, we're defining the neighborhood and its character.
Okay.
Cause if you're gonna say, no, this sign's not gonna change the character.
Right.
Better know what that character is. We all know.
Five other.
I would add one thing to the, to the description, it's a suburban locale. Because city dealerships are all different, they don't have the space to play with, it's all different, and the site, every, everything's different. So this is, you know, uh, our version of Henrietta, and, uh, it is what it is.
There you go.
Perfect, so will this, the variance result in something seriously out of place? Everyone seems to be saying no, and the reason I would think is because everybody, it's the same sign that was there before.
I didn't say anything.
Everybody.
I was just looking at it like, what?
Well, if you're not gonna answer, I'll answer.
No, I, cause I was thinking, why does it matter, it's just like you said.
It's a good idea to do this.
Well, I thought it was redundant.
So it probably won't impact adjacent parcels, right? Right.
The other parcels will.
Will it impact drainage or stormwater? No, traffic?
We need to go through all those things for.
Every single time. If the answer is no, then Crin can write no.
Okay, now I'm just.
And, yeah, cause if you don't go through every single one, every single time. Then you might miss one, you might get accused of ignoring. Something important, or being, or, or you might apply one to this, this sign and. Not for the next one. Okay, where do we move on then? Uh, so we'll skip down to views and aesthetic resources, if it can have an impact on that.
Nope.
No.
No, because it's the same sign.
Is it a self-created, no, is the minimum variance necessary, yes or no?
I'd say yes.
Benefit to the applicant outweigh the detriment to the neighborhood.
Yes, I don't think the same is detriment.
Okay. Sorry, it's just.
My picture is right, you can make a verbal comparison.
I was, I was just pointing that because of, you know, air quality and all that stuff.
I know, maybe you don't have to, I don't, I don't know. Like, if you start skipping, then you're gonna skip all of them, and you're gonna go, oh, it's right here on this blue card. And.
Okay, got that then? Next one is the Randall Buick GMC, uh, Garber Randall sign. Thomas Road.
Yeah.
Do we really, are we gonna?
May I say, may I? Anybody have journey to the findings?
No.
Being carried over and replicated?
Same as above.
I don't.
I mean, is there anything that's different?
Oh, no.
Shall the variance for a third building sign be granted, Shannon Chevier?
Yes.
Bob Hillier?
Yes.
David Emery?
Yes.
Kelly LaVoy?
Yes.
Chip Saylor?
Yes. For all the same reasons that were on the other side. Okay. The care of County Road sixteen. So we have two left. We still have Fallbrook Park, and we have.
Item number one.
Okay.
We have one, one and four, right?
One and five.
And four and five.
On make, I'm going to request that you discuss. And then, don't, don't render a, don't take a vote, exercise your sixty-two days. So that I can prepare some findings of that.
Okay.
To present to you, um, you had, I think. Risk litigation either way, um, so I can prepare proposed findings of that, being accepted or rejected.
Okay, so let's do a discussion on make now.
Okay, right now?
Cause we have several people.
I don't, my, my issue, I don't see why we would create another issue on this. You know, I have, I have an issue with that a lot, personally. Feel like we're just, maybe creating another problem, you know, by giving another variance, but that's my personal opinion.
I, I would like to, it's one thing to talk about reality, but a lot of that, this whole thing is hypotheticals. What's gonna happen down the line?
Right.
Be one thing if they could present exactly what they wanted to do. And they've not seen any of that, so.
Well, I think that can be wrapped up in the. Go-to versus checklist, can the benefit be achieved by other means, we aren't really sure what the benefit is here.
Yeah.
I mean, we're being asked to go from two to now three. Um. I'm not sure what that does or doesn't do for them, that. That he can't do a different way.
I, oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, I was gonna ask.
I have a slightly different. Uh, I don't think you can necessarily define cause and effect with what they're doing and all the problems. But given that, in the, uh, uh, from the New York Planning Federation. Uh, on top of the criteria, they mentioned the balancing test. And it says the Board of Appeals shall balance benefit to applicant. With detriment to health, safety, and welfare of the community. Well, obviously, you can, if you can make a case for the environmental. Within, then the balance is way off, there, there, there's no way that the, uh, the, um, uh, benefit to the applicant. Should outweigh, uh, that community feeling about, about the environment. However, I don't know how, and maybe, uh, with research, we can get that, how you can, um. Maybe more information, draw a cause and effect with the environmental, uh, issues that they, uh, have out there. We know about the, about the slopes, and we know about the, about the, the, uh, the farmers and all that stuff. But, but tha- that's a big deal. And we, and if we owe it to our community, not to add to a problem that exists. I think that's, that's working for the community, so.
So, so.
That's where I'm at.
Like, my question, I mean, I, you know, and as we are, we're a zoning board, and we're not. We don't look at the development of the props, our properties, or projects, or whatever. And we have an idea, we wanna be, obviously, you know, environmentally conscious. But like, just looking at this application just as, as, as itself, I mean, I remember this several years ago when they came. And it was already, there was something already going on with it, was the non-conforming issue, and then they went and split it up, and.
A lot of that was setbacks.
Right, well, yeah, so, cause they had the bar, close the road, and, so, I mean, it was problematic anyway. And I know there was some discussion of future development then, at that time, that they were worried about it. But the problem I see is, we're just making another issue, like, it's already an issue. To double the lot, or to make it to an half times, you know, I mean, that's all another issue.
It's a substantial.
Yeah, so I mean, that, it doesn't even, we don't have to really even know almost what they're doing with it. It just, are we, do we wanna make another issue, or why, you know, in my opinion.
But it says, health, safety, and welfare of the community.
Well, I get that part.
I'm thinking.
But we don't even know how that would even change, or it was just moving the lot lines, so taking that aside, and, but looking at it in itself, I mean, we wanna. Is that what we wanna, you know, do we wanna make another, create another issue, I mean, I don't, that's my, my.
I guess, being, being an eternal optimist. Um, it may actually be a time at which, if we were to improve it. That there actually could be improvements made on the current situation, because the current situation's bad.
Yeah.
Yes.
And, you know, does our.
And, and a lot of.
Using to have them make a change in those lot lines, basically. Does that mean it's gonna get worse, or can we really?
Well, honestly, I think you cannot, you, it is a, what's before us, we can make no determination whatsoever. Changing the lot lines is something on a piece of paper, it is nothing that is real, it does not change for the better or the worse. The, the conditions, also water, or how it will, whatever, we're, we're talking about drawing on paper in reality. So it really, that really does have to all be deferred to the planning board when and if development occurs. It's, that, that's, that's what's before us, is on the piece of paper, can these lines be here or here? That's kinda what I, you know, what I was going, I mean, right, why are we even having that discussion now, when we don't, it's kind of like the.
I'm sorry, that makes sense, but I think whether it's a yes or a no. I think at the end, we need to make a statement about the, uh, issues that were presented. Uh, even if we can't, uh, um, address them, uh, through the variance process. At least beyond the record, saying that, that, uh, multiple concerns were, were brought up. With the environment and all that, because I, I don't want it to appear that we are disregarding. Uh, what people said, even if we can't be the change agents, uh, you know, for them.
You know, and by not doing anything, are we just gonna perpetuate a bad situation?
But, but that's still gonna be, even if we do change lot lines, it's still not, it's not gonna change them, and even, even. Make statements, I mean, we can't make them do anything proper, so.
But if he wants to do something with his property. And.
Can it or can grant the variance?
With conditions.
And on him stopping all runoff. East of his property.
But I don't see how.
North or south of his property, that being said, the, the only reason you would do that is that. I think the planning board is a bit hard pressed to impose that condition. That what he's required to do is, if he's gonna build a set of them at home, he's required to prevent the additional runoff. Usually, in most cases, it's just as easy to prevent all of them. You know, your house is here, his house gets flooded every day here, doesn't make it live. Come up here, and you're gonna build a house here, usually, you can just, your stormwater management is gonna divert all of it. This, I don't think they can.
Yeah, so I was gonna say, but.
Any board can make it better.
Well, but here's.
Condition of variance, yeah, but I.
It's like saying, you're gonna condition mother nature.
Well, you're gonna condition him spending.
But.
Quarter million dollars.
If he goes to, let's say, say that, you know, he goes to develop property anyway, he's gonna have to come back if he's, most likely gonna need a variance of some sort. Right, I mean, we're, what else, I'm assuming, I mean, how are you gonna develop that property with?
Well, my guess is you're gonna.
So they.
Build the property whether you grant a variance.
Yes, right.
But, it sounds like there are alternatives.
Right, well, I mean, maybe then there, that would be a discussion that he, you know, uh. That's my opinion.
Maybe he needs to do a diversion plan, you know, that in the planning board can come up to, you know, it's just. Us granting this variance isn't going to make it anything better.
So, does anybody?
No.
Disagree with what's done, what's been said?
No, I would just add to it that I don't want us to be perceived when we had this much of a public outcry. That we're saying, not my job. Uh, you know, we need to, it leaves, uh, and I think we're all in agreement. We need to make sure that this is not, that this stays alive, and is, is, uh, comes in action. If, you know, with the appropriate people.
And there, there are some other issues too, which, even I talked about Sarah, I mean, does the town need to look at? Limiting the number of rentable units in, in certain areas.
Yeah, that, so I read, I was reading about that, and it says that the town does not limit, that you, there's no rule on how many you can have, but. But technically, I can argue that that would change the character of the neighborhood, you know, I mean, if you had a whole pile of rentals all in one strip. That's not a neighborhood anymore, that's a short.
Sounds like you already has that.
I, well, yeah, and so I was reading through all the, you know, different towns' comments and stuff, and it, and it does change the character of the neighborhood, so. I mean, if they're all grouped like that, I mean, but there is no number for Ken and Dagwell, you don't, you can have as many money as you want, but, I mean.
But maybe there needs to be.
Maybe, well, but the problem is, is the state does not, does not like you to start getting into micromanaging property ownership venues, so. I did read that, that was very.
I got what I need.
You got it?
Mostly, until somebody does something else.
I, I wanted to add one more thing, just cause we gotta go back to math, it's, you know, that's what I do.
Yep.
All right, we currently have a lot that existed as a single lot, that was a non-conforming lot with this depth with ratio.
Single, non-conforming lot. Okay.
About, um, sometime ago, I forget now when.
Few years.
Few years ago.
Twenty.
A variance was granted to split that into two lots. One conforming, and no, no, nothing, nothing wrong with it. The second that still has a width to depth issue. What's before us is a question of going down to three lots. Two of which are conforming, one of which will continue to have the width depth issue.
I don't know if the other one would actually be conforming if they moved a lot.
Yes, they are.
But your lot would be?
Oh, no, we're.
Okay.
Turns into the non-conforming lot.
Okay, but that may have a.
Lot two would turn into conforming.
So they, lot two would be, even though it's double the width, that would be conforming?
It would no longer be double the width, double the depth.
Double the depth, okay, 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 gotcha.
He's not saying.
That's where I was missing that.
He's saying that if he runs a private road up there, he can maybe add three or four.
I know.
Different, so.
So my, my point is, my point is, this was a non-conforming lot. After a variance, there became a conforming and a non-conforming lot. If there was this variance, there'd be two conforming lots, one non-conforming lot, so we have technically not changed the non-conformance.
Actually, let me back you up, so the original property actually was all non-conforming, cause there was multiple properties on one. So there, so the original non-conforming, yeah, it became multiple non.
So we'd have gone from one lot to three lots, been carried over.
Two lot to three lots, right?
I, I went through.
Carried over the non-conforming.
Right.
Yes.
Exactly.
You know, it's interesting.
From one to two to now the ask is for three.
Right.
The same non-conformity has existed since the dawn of time.
With, with that express.
I, no, I, I am.
No, what I'm saying is the, the non-conforming issue, nevermind, it's not a big deal, it was non-conforming issue because there was multiple.
No, it's always been non-conforming for that to win, always, even when.
Well, yeah, I'm not much to talk about, I was talking about there was other, other non-conforming issues.
That's fine. But, but I'm saying, this one issue, that is the only issue before us, has always existed.
Now, it's interesting, you know, the horseshoe's shape.
Right.
If you, I mean, it's a wide lot at certain points, at the base of the horseshoe.
Right.
It's just where you're coming out to the.
Yes.
Uh, road, where it's actually measured for those purposes.
Right.
It's, it's very non-conforming, yeah.
Yeah, somebody said the percentage here is a substantial change, and if you do the math out. It is a substantial number, it is not a substantial change.
Right. So you wanna work through some things then, Chris, and we'll hold off voting and put off voting until next time.
By making a motion to, I guess you just don't vote.
We don't. Closed.
Yep.
Hearing closed. We will elect a vote at a later time, within sixty-two days.
But I guess this one, we'll forget to put on the gentleman.
Okay.
Thank you. Would we be advised at all, or how will we?
It'll be at the next zoning board meeting. It'll be at the next board, next board meeting.
At which point, there will be no, no opportunity for public comment, the board at the end of the meeting, three thirty.
Just like we just said now. Yeah.
And. After all the presentations, when you start the discussion again, this one will come be first.
Yeah.
Okay, you might.
Actually, yeah, since it's continued, we can do it at the first.
It may or may not.
No.
Well.
I mean, I, I don't know. Um.
I wouldn't.
Yeah, okay, it'll be sometime during the next meeting.
Sometime between six and eight. No, it's gonna be between six and eight.
Yes.
I don't want Marion waiting for me in the park.
Yeah, right, thank you.
Ready to step.
Okay, um.
Can I just say one thing, not having to do with that, I can't help myself. These guys discussing the size of the lettering, when are guys gonna learn that size doesn't act?
Well.
It's recorded, right?
Ban her from coming to any more meetings.
Actually, it was a lady last week, so, or last month, so, it was a good point, but.
Okay, let's go back to, uh, Fallbrook Park. Okay, let's go back to Fallbrook Park. Three, three, seven, eight Fallbrook Park, side of the garage.
I don't think this is in the character of the neighborhood at all.
Wait, 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 you know how we'll know if it's in the character of the neighborhood? If you start by, let's say, defining the name, what's the neighborhood?
The neighborhood is the forty lots on Fallbrook Park.
Okay, what's the character of it?
Well, anything that is at the garage is 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 the small garage unless it's attached to. The the main structure, in that case, then there is, they are have double height on.
And the other thing in the neighborhood, preexisting nonconformity is uh is the is.
The entire neighborhood.
In a in Fallbrook, or am I wrong? It in the Fallbrook uh neighborhood isn't or isn't preexisting.
Everything.
Like everything.
Everything over there is preexisting, I don't think there's a normal house over there.
There is, there is one.
Is there?
There is one garage down. Two doors down, I know exactly, I lived in it for thirteen years.
Wow, you weren't supposed to live in the garage.
They had in the garage.
We had five kids, okay? My dad built it in nineteen sixty two, so it was way before any changes in the code. And and as far as I know, right now, I don't think they've maintained the, and that has full everything, it's a full apartment. But I don't think they can use it anymore cuz I think they let the pipes freeze and I don't think they can, I don't know.
But that one is separate though, isn't it?
It is separate.
Yeah, okay, that's.
But it's the only other one on the, as far as I know, it's the only one on the whole lot, or the whole bunch down.
So will we result in, will it result in something seriously out of place? You say no?
I, will this be out of place? No.
I think it is.
So we gotta split, so.
Yeah, I don't think it is either, Chris.
We have consensus there.
F of you.
Then after the roll comes the.
No, I, it's really important, I think, in my opinion.
You think that's substantial compared to?
No, I think it's the only, there's only two, and I think the one is is so different, it's huge. One that's two doors down is that, it's it's basically a building bigger than most places, so that's out of, certainly out of the the neighborhood as well. But I, this is.
But one does not define the character. Of the overall. Would be your fault.
I'm just saying, I think if you look at all the other garages in that entire track, you won't find any of their, they've doubled the height.
Okay, I can.
And, oh, doubled them, yeah.
They're at eighteen eleven now.
It's double the allowable. But yes, your your point is valid.
Every other garage down there is, and I'm just saying to me, you know, nobody's got enough space.
Right.
It's always the biggest issue, I'm the thing, and I I don't have any great ideas, but.
Well, I know he was going up, what, six, six feet? No, what was it, eight feet? Six feet.
Twenty four from.
Yeah, eighteen to twenty four, I think.
Or nineteen to twenty.
And I'm not saying it's substantial, and I'm not saying, you know, everybody else on the board will disagree with me, but I probably will survive.
Really, you're.
I'm just telling you from my opinion, and I don't think every neighbor down there totally agrees with with this happening, that's my own.
Do we have any letters from neighbors?
Well, I don't, my mother has a place there, so it's like.
There are letters from neighbors.
I saw one, whether the mother lives there or another one?
Yeah, I was gonna say, I didn't.
I saw one in support. Okay, yeah, that's all, so. Okay, so it's a substantial increase over what's allowed, right? Yeah. Uh, will it have any adverts in strain of traffic, dust, noise, light, older views and aesthetic reasons?
I always wondered about view of the lake, but not really cuz the house is right behind it, so, and and that's. You can't see the lake with the house there, so.
It's not gonna obstruct any views like that, the golf course is right behind there.
Yeah.
But I'm just saying, it's.
It is.
Is it a self created porch? I believe it is, yes. Uh, is it the minimum variance necessary? Sounds like it, I don't know.
This is a necessary structure, what?
I'd be able to find necessary.
Well, I think if you're gonna use that second floor for storage. It's fairly, no, I mean, seven feet is right at the center, but starts at four and goes up.
Could you use less of a eight to the roof? Might gain a foot or so.
Yeah, I was looking at, looking at the print in my head.
Okay, now I think you probably vote, that's what I mean.
A shall the variance of eight feet be granted for the detached garage height? B shall variance be granted for a second floor addition to a detached garage in the R L D, Shannon Chevy. Wait, sorry, the both of those things are variances? Yeah, I thought there's two, there didn't change, did it? The second one shall the variance be granted for a second floor addition for detached garage in the R L D?
I I only read this as one variance, was questioned area variance may be for.
Yes, I read this one also, just the eight foot variance in order to allow it.
Addition on a detached garage in the R L D, I thought that was a variance.
No, that's explaining the.
Oh, okay.
Why they.
All right.
It was.
Okay, Shannon Chevy. The equal.
I'm gonna say yes.
Mark Hillier?
Yes.
David Emery?
No.
Kelly LaBois?
No.
Chip Salo?
Yes. Motion, that's.
But they did things of the.
Assuming. Cuz it's a variance in the R L D, right?
It was so, it was so long ago that we got that, I didn't, what if the county board? The counties.
It is, I know that neighborhood, it's a train rack down there, but I know that we've also denied some stuff down there as well, so. You pointed back that there was a lady that represented Sierra.
It was.
That sounds like.
You're absolutely right.
I go, just for the record.
So we don't know if there's any comments?
They're starting to exempt some. The county.
I apologize, it's motion passed. I just, I I purely made the assumption there that.
I know, well, I was, yeah, I was already like.
Okay, um.
I do think.
Benefit to the applicant outweighs the detriment to the neighborhood is.
Yes.
I, I think it is in keeping with the character of the neighborhood, I guess, I don't find separating the garage for six feet.
And you can use the lot covered stuff that are the.
Everything we already.
Like, right? Close height, so.
They have the height on it?
No, they don't, no. I have one with height on it, so. That someone brought in um five years ago.
Yes, there's no, well, there's.
The neighborhood is a neighborhood of nonconforming.
Neighborhood is nonconforming, you know.
He's already did these things, you don't have to go again.
Okay, you've got them all then down.
But you, we're gonna oppose any condition.
I would probably, it'd be done in a year.
I think that's a good idea.
So you drive into my driveway.
Okay, um. Is that it? Okay, um. Does, does raise a question, I, I talked to Sarah about this earlier, if we get a certain number of. Of variance requests on the agenda. I think even our rules say if it goes over five, you have to check with us to see if it's okay.
Yeah, it does, and I'm sorry, we didn't.
Okay, well.
How many were on there, twenty five this time?
Yeah, no, I.
Feel like it was more.
I mean, three of those could, well, Chris, you can argue it, but we haven't done yet.
Well, this is pretty late to this board, it's.
I'm really hungry.
I don't think any more, I'm super late.
Yeah.
I think.
Hey, we're not.
Kinda got it, if you do it every time, you kinda gotta start adding a second unit. Cuz you can't just put people off forever and they're not allowed to use them.
I mean, right, yeah.
Yes.
Oh.
We have one more.
We didn't do one. I suggest we talk about that next time.
I think you should actually do finding.
Do it now.
For.
Yeah, my piece is gonna be gone.
That's something you guys are, I don't know, everyone just sort of give me a one word feeling about it.
Yay or nay?
Yes.
Yay. Wow, oh, no, no.
You feel about it, you feel very bad.
I, no, all right, I'm sorry, I take that back.
Should make a little inroad by getting them to drop some, uh you know, to to landscape the lot better. I think that's a start.
How many?
Your name. It's a yay, okay, no, you feel bad about it, we're not voting right now, I don't should, Shannon. Form based code parking lot at Westher, how do you feel about it, good or bad?
I would want to split it up. They're they're requesting like five variances, if we can vote on them individually, I am very comfortable.
Oh, we're not voting today.
No.
Okay, that's fine, basically, I I am, I think I've said this before, of the opinion. That we don't have to go from zero to ninety on one room. But if there's a change being asked for, I want to see concession towards form based in some way, shape or form.
Right, and I'm gonna draft you, I think I know the conditions you guys would be interested in, and then we can add any if. I'll propose some stuff for you and then I'll talk to you about that, and then you guys can pick, choose and or add stuff.
Yeah, because there is like five or six of them as far as location and landscaping and size. I think they could tone some of those down and do what they want.
I thought they did a pretty good job.
I think they had more options than, than they were, they weren't putting all the cars at the table.
I suggested last night, uh signing board meeting. Well, you know, a lot of car dealerships form these codes, build the glass buildings right up against the roads. Like a greenhouse type structure, two stories, really don't take your car, he laughed and said, uh, do you know anything about how much it costs to build?
Yeah, no, get it.
Uh, and I think, I think it's a good point. In a city, that kind of car dealership is kind of cool.
Yeah, right.
Honda dealers would love to do that, get on the corner, you put four cars.
All the show are still available.
Well, you know, I mean.
Bring it back to my previous for everybody.
And Sarah, I was on those discussions like like at the form based code and when we were, I was on a lot of those committees back then. And um and I remember the conversations, but it's it's envisioned for a much bigger picture of. Two-story buildings with livable space and and recreation and a whole like existing. Entity on its own, where you would go like almost like a destination place, like go to the gym or watch a movie or, you know, like stuff like that, like. But it's not, it's nowhere near there at this point, so. It's it's just gonna be slow getting there.
My whole problem with, my whole problem with that. Form based code up there is you're taking a major north south.
Yeah.
Thoroughfare, and then you're gonna try and change.
Run a highway area.
I mean, make more sense to try and really push form based code on like North Road. Or something that's not a main thoroughfare.
Well, I think that's kind of what, didn't we, we were looking at that general corridor, right, originally or no? Yeah, it was kind of like started.
Yeah.
On the same street.
But, yeah.
I mean, it works on paper.
You're going to work and come back.
I triggered you so hard on that one.
Business minutes. The board business and the minutes.
Okay, yeah, we have minutes from last time, I just signed.
Standing up now.
You can do them next time.
No, go ahead.
They were distributed, so, yeah.
They were, yeah.
Uh, motion to accept them?
I would, I guess.
Kelly, favorite?
I'm not, there you go.
Against, okay. Uh, just, just to bring in, um.
And Bob.
Bob, Bob is requesting to resign to our committee.
He's requesting, request denied.
Yeah.
And Jason, Jason has has accepted coming on as a full-time member, I think, for it to actually happen.
That requires town board.
I talked to Sarah about it.
Right.
I can flip into the alternate until another alternative is.
That'd be good.
Because I don't, there's too much pressure on you, uh, with this on five.
Yeah.
That could definitely be great.
That would be, yeah.
Bob will be on forever.
So we could.
You're just creating rules, you know that.
Give that to Jared, do you want me to do something to, or excuse me?
Sorry, on my list, for the nice town board meetings, so.
You have their resumes or something about them because the town board has indicated, hey. I'm voting, I mean, this one's bad example.
When you're hiring new persons for, but these people are already lost.
That should ask.
Before it or after?
Jason, I think, had to go through that.
Well, I'll be there, I'll. Do, do we have a town manager?
Yeah. Uh, we, yeah, you have a new town manager, his name is John Sepfalvo. He was appointed unanimously by the town board at their meeting on Monday night. He is currently the undersheriff of Ontario County. Responsible for uh preparing and and compliance with their budget. Which is fifty million dollar budget. The town of Canadega budget is sixteen million, I think, that's ballpark figures. Um, I believe uh he uses the same software at the county as the town uses for budget preparation. He obviously has extensive management experience with the sheriff's office, um. The town board unanimously. Pick up this guy as the selection committee and voted for him, and everyone expressed they're very excited, looking at working with them.
Oh, are they gonna distribute that information at some point?
Did you not hear what I did? I just. I hereby distributed.
But if I weren't at this meeting, how would I?
I don't know, it's it's.
The town manager role the same or has it been reduced?
The town manager role is exactly the same, no changes um have been made. Um, a copy of his employment agreement. Which is just two pages saying we're gonna do what it says in the town code and we're gonna pay this much, and your start date is, I believe, August twelfth. August twelfth.
Somewhere in there.
So that's all available, July twenty second, town board agenda, it's an attachment. Yeah, it's not in the town news. Um. Yes, well, I bet it will be tomorrow. Uh, cuz I'm gonna mention that.
All right.
All right, but yeah, he's gonna work with Jared and the town board, I think.
See, I do have. Vote him to adjourn.
I, I always like your.
Vote you move to adjourn?
I go to adjourn.
I have a second all in favor.